Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the continuation of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for June 2nd, continuing now on June 3rd. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fresco.
Here.
Commissioner Father Bonardi. We'll try to get him on. Commissioner Lambert.
Here.
Commissioner Pastor.
Here.
Commissioner Raskin.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Present.
And Chair Landris.
I'm not hearing anything.
Hello? Can you hear me? Chair Landris?
I can hear you.
Oh, did you lose the audio?
Um.
Now I'm... There we go.
Sean, can you hear out? We can hear you.
Now I can hear you.
Okay.
And yeah, let's try that again.
Chair, Chair Landris.
Yes, I'm here. Uh, with weird connectivity issues, which I will resolve. Okay. So, um, before I turn it over to staff, I just want to clarify with the public uh, that this is a continuation of yesterday's meeting. We heard public comment on this item 10A at yesterday's meeting. We also took general public comment for yesterday's meeting. Yesterday, uh, there was none. Uh, and so there is no public comment tonight. Our plan is to uh, hear uh, some updates from staff based on questions that we asked last night. And uh, we, following that, we'll go straight into discussion. Uh, I do want to bring to the public's attention, uh, because it was just posted. Uh, if you are still interested in giving public comment on the housing element, there will be a special meeting of the Santa Monica Planning Commission, Thursday, June 10th at 6:00 PM. The purpose of that meeting of the Housing Commission is to discuss the housing element, and so there would be an opportunity pursuant to the Housing Commission's rules for you to uh, give a comment on the, on the planning, on the housing element. So uh, if you feel like you've missed your chance, or if you want to speak again, uh, that would be your next opportunity before it goes to council on June 15th. Um, so with that, let me turn it back over to uh, to Jing, um, to uh, to give us any updates.
Great, thank you. Um, I also want to note Commissioner Father Bonardi was able to join from the attendee list, so good to have you here. Um, uh, so I think I just wanted to go over um, a handful of questions from last night's meeting. Give me a moment to pull it up here. Um, these were questions that the commissioner had, or that the commission had. Um, so if I could just run through them. Uh, one was, there was a question about how many, um, how many recycled sites there were and what is the capacity? So there are 25 recycled sites and the capacity is 1,500 units. Um, and then there was a question, um, in the context of uh, the R1 proposal, whether there's comparative data about the pace of development um, when single-family zoning is converted to multi-unit zoning. Um, because this is a somewhat recent phenomenon, there, there isn't a huge amount of data or like, you know, some studies, so we, we kind of had to do a lot of searching around with different policy, um, research, uh, groups and, and what have you. Um, I think generally, as I indicated yesterday, that, um, what we're seeing, um, there, there's like one study we found with respect to property values. It was from the National uh, Low Income Housing Coalition, and that studied, um, the impacts of upzoning in Chicago. Um, and what was found there was, although property values went up, um, there was not a sort of, um, corresponding increase in units developed. Um, so that was that one study we found with respect to property values. Um, there was also, um, articles that we found, uh, with respect to cities that have done recent single-family zoning and, um, you know, Minneapolis's experience as of 2020, I think they had, you know, basically three projects. Um, out of all of the, um, rezoning that happened there to allow essentially triflexes um, in their R1 neighborhoods. Um, and, you know, I think different articles we've seen is that it's not sort of as, that, that, that change doesn't happen quickly or immediately, um, because there may be other standards. You know, whether it be parking, you know, all the other development standards, if, if they don't get adjusted, it doesn't, you know, really lead to that sort of change. And, and of course also, you know, homeowners need to be, you know, they're, they're not selling their property, you know, so that change doesn't happen uh, very quickly. So that's, that's kind of an overview of the sort of quick research we were able to, uh, pull together and trying to find, um, studies about that. Um, and then finally, um, I think Chair, you had a question about, um, this idea of, uh, flopping three, three units, and I'm going to have Heidi just to respond, um, to that uh, particular question.
Sure, so I'm, I'm happy to answer that briefly. So, you know, there are concerns about, it actually goes both ways, um, with respect to how the state ADU law is written. There would be a concern about asking a property owner to waive their rights to, um, get an ADU on the property after the fact, but then also the city has very specific ministerial duties to approve ADUs on properties under these circumstances. So I think we would be concerned about, um, entering into an agreement that would try to circumvent those duties.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, let, let's go down the line. Uh, yes, Commissioner Fresco, I see you.
I wanted to ask Heidi a question.
Yeah, let's do a round. If anybody has wild questions, let's cover them.
Hi. Um, another question that Sean asked that was kind of curious was the idea of a homeowner in the present day R1, uh, choosing at a certain point, like when redevelopment occurs, if they want to go the R1 cubed route, that's what I call it in my... Or if they want to go the R2 route, and then they get the whatever goes with those accordingly. Right. They'll want to build a, a large house and an ADU and a JADU, they would choose the R1 cubed route, but if they want to build two equally sized units and get whatever ADUs they're allowed, they can choose the R2 route. Is that? I thought he asked you that, and I was hoping you were getting it.
I don't have an idea, but it's a new question.
I'm happy to answer that question. So, the way the ADU law is written, so this is, again, this is a state law that, um, applies to every city. You do have a ministry, as the law is written today, which as you know, it gets updated quite frequently, but as the law is written today, if a property owner comes in and asks for, um, and applies for construction of up to two, two detached ADUs on a property that with an existing multiple unit dwelling, if they meet the specific requirements of those two detached ADUs, the city is required by law to ministerially approve those. So that would be if they went the, what you're saying, the R2 route, and they put a duplex on there, but they have to be existing, and as Commissioner Reese mentioned, there is nothing in the law that explains like how long you would have to, what sort of time lag there would be between constructing the multiple unit dwelling and then coming in and applying for the additional units. And then, as you know, the single unit dwelling, they can have the JADU and the ADU, that could all happen simultaneously under state law. All three units could be built simultaneously under state law.
But they can't build... But if it's R2, I guess they could still build a big unit and a small unit, which would be equivalent to a big house and a JADU, right?
Yes, and so the, the law looks at the use and not necessarily the zoning, um, but with respect to the ADU.
Two units, whatever size, they don't have to be the same, so, okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to drill into that difference a little more. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Leslie?
I have a quick question, Heidi. Um, I know state law says that we're not allowed to count lot coverage for the first 800 feet of an ADU. I can't remember what the, I can't remember what the language is for JADU. Can we count that for lot coverage?
Uh, no, and those are, but they're only 500 square feet, so the, so that limitation is 500 square feet. And the city has also elected not to, um, not to, for, up to 1,000, I believe, and then 1,200 for, for ADUs. 1,200 on larger lot size.
AD, ADU over 800 square feet, we could, if we chose, count for block coverage.
Yes, and the way the law is written is that you are not, you are not able to place any restrictions um, that would not permit somebody to build an 800-square-foot, um, ADU on the lot. Thank you.
Jim?
Can I ask a clarif- question on that? A junior ADU is built into a bill, into an existing building. The building was, and it can't be, it can't be created until after the building is built, so the lot coverages would already be calculated in there, wouldn't it?
So a JADU could be constructed as, as, it can be constructed two ways. If there is an existing single unit dwelling, you can carve out part of that single unit dwelling to create a JADU, or when you walk in the door for plan check, you could have plans that contemplate a JADU as part of the single unit dwelling.
Okay.
And then Ross may want to, Ross may want to hop in on exactly how the city, um, processes the JADUs when they come in um, with a single unit dwelling.
Uh, yeah, I can chime in. Uh, essentially what Heidi said is correct. Um, we do allow JADU, a brand-new JADU to be constructed in tandem with a brand-new, single-unit, um, dwelling. It doesn't need to be an after-the-fact, um, approval.
But multifamily can only have detached ADUs, multifamily can't have JADUs.
Multi, multifamily cannot have JADUs, but they are allowed both two brand-new detached ones, uh, once the multifamily is existing, but you can also, exactly, you can also convert up, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, let, let's, let's walk backwards then. If, since we're having this conversation now, um, if we wanted to, and I don't know that we do, but if we wanted to preserve the form-based code governing R1, and we wanted to permit, as the staff report outlines, up to three roughly equal-sized units on an R, on that lot, right? So I'm imagining the kind of, um, uh, the kind of structure that was envisioned in the, in the feasibility analysis. What would be the legal path to accomplishing that without upzoning to R2? In other words, is there an opportunity, if, if we were, if, if this is blue-sky thinking, if we're going from scratch, would we have to create like a new R1 cubed zone, um, designation to get those rules? Or is there another pathway to accomplish that?
You're asking to basically accommodate the three units on the R1. What do we have to change to the current standards? Is that what you're asking?
Um, what would we, no, 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 not to the current standards. I'm saying if we wanted to create a rule that said essentially on an R1 lot, you have a choice. You can do big two, you know, big primary house plus ADU plus JADU, or you can do the three. Now, I understand that there might be follow-on implications uh, later on, but let's say that they build to their envelope. Um, is there a path to do that? Could we create a new zoning designation? Or are we not making this of the way state law is written?
I already asked that question. The answer to that, sorry.
Well, yeah.
I, I, I mean, I don't think we, I don't think we need to get down the path of a, like, the specific how, but I mean, to answer your question, you know, in short form, like, no, you don't necessarily have to. There, there are different ways that you can create an allowance without literally creating a new zone. I mean, I think we haven't really dug into all of the details yet. Um, you know, but is it something between R1 and R2, like, that, that's literally, certainly you could do something like that, but to the extent it applies to what is currently all of the existing R1, um, you know, it could simply be an allowance there, so it doesn't, it's not, it's, it, it's permissive, right? It doesn't, it doesn't mean that that's all you can do, if that makes any sense. You're just, you're just providing the opportunity for someone to do that um, on, on that property, but there's a limitation on the number of units. You know, whereas in the R2, that's, it's a different density, so you know, if, instead of using a units for acre calculation, and maybe just something, you know, that says you can do up to three units, and you can still call it the R1 zone, because you can still do single-family on there.
You can do up to three.
Yeah, I heard the answer to your question, but I think they...
Well, I mean, it's, yeah, it's just, I, I guess I'm saying, because you're asking, do you, like, how would you do that? And I think it's just, there, there are various ways. You can do it within the zone and the development standards. You can certainly do overlays, I guess. You can, um, there's, you know, I, I don't know that the specific tool matters so much as the concept, you know, of what you're trying to accomplish.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't want to get into, um, too much of a discussion on this either, but I do just want to clarify. So state law, in the most, in the update, um, that became effective on January 1st, 2020, required the city to allow for JADUs and ADUs in every zone of the city that allows for housing. So that was another change. Though in terms of, you know, how the city zones and the densities, um, those decisions that are made, the ADU laws overlay all of that
Okay.
in every zone.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have one more que- I'm sorry, I have one more question. Um, would it be, would it be legal to, if we do any upzoning in R1, to delimit it basically to properties with alleys, so we would say no curb cuts can be involved? Would that be legal?
I think we could look into that and, and kind of the rational basis for that sort of limitation, and, and of course, the planning manager, um, may want to jump in on, on, um, whether or not she believes that there would be policy considerations as well. You know, but certainly if we can create a record that there's, um, you know, a rational basis for that distinction, um, that's something we could look into.
Thank you. I would agree with that. Um, I, I think that there's also one more piece of, um, information we wanted to respond to. There was a question about, uh, whether we could look into how many ADUs have been in 2021, so I believe Ross has done a little bit of that digging, and if you could share.
Yeah, um, this was some quick numbers, but I'm going to show you my screen. I'm sorry that the tables maybe aren't as pretty as I would like them to be, but, um, as you can see on the left-hand side, that is the prior table that was included in the staff report and in the housing element. Uh, those numbers only were up till March 1st of this year, so uh, we redid the numbers going to June 1st, so just two days ago. And as you can see, there has been some changes to the, um, permits that were in, um, the statuses of permits. Uh, specifically 24 of them changed from maybe an in-progress to an issued, or an issued to a complete. Um, also, although we're not really counting 2021s in kind of the production, uh, just in the last three months, uh, 23 new ADU permits have been applied for. Um, but also, uh, since there has been a lot of questions regarding how did we get to these numbers, I kind of wanted to, uh, show you the raw data. So how to determine to show that we did not double, triple count, um, this was the raw data we pulled, with the left-hand side being every individual ADU permit, um, only listed once. Uh, and then each permit has three, potentially three columns. Um, whether it was the permit acceptance, so that's the in-progress, if it was issued, or if it was finalled. To put, to decide where the ADU went into the table, I always use the most recent status. So for example, all of these ones that you're seeing here, as they have a finalled, um, uh, date, they were all in the completed. Versus these ones where they only have a date and the acceptance, they were only the in-progress dates. Um, and it's, and additionally, when you go all the way down to the issued, these were only placed in an issued column. They, they, no one ever got, just because there's two dates doesn't mean that they were put in twice, essentially. But that's kind of how the raw data came to be. Um, there's also been a couple of questions regarding, you know, what are we allowed to use for our projections? So HCD um, gives kind of two options to project ADUs into the next housing element cycle. Uh, the first one is you can take the prior production of ADUs from two, um, uh, before 2018, and you can multiply that by five. Um, unfortunately, we only started tracking ADU developments really in 2018, when the laws started changing. So that option doesn't exactly work for us. However, HCD gives another choice where you can take past production trends as an indication of the projection of ADU development, which is what we used to decide kind of, we took the average and then multiplied that over eight years. So you can see in these, um, two calculations at the bottom that if you take the average of all ADUs over the last three years, we actually are looking at around 84, 85 ADUs per year. Um, and if you multiply that by eight, it would come to 672. We, we only projected 600 because we wanted to account for a decline of ADUs on single-unit properties. Um, but also an increase potentially in multifamily. For example, I did have a little bit of time to look at 2021 permits, and of the 27 ADU permits that were applied for in 2021, nine of them, uh, were actually for more, more than just one ADU. Uh, uh, seven of them were for two ADUs, and two of them were for three ADUs. So that is really showing the trend of people are starting to do ADUs in multifamily. Um, but there also is another alternative, some question if we are allowed to use the in-progress ADU permits. Um, if we didn't, if we just used the issued and complete, uh, we would actually average 44 ADUs a year for a 352 ADU production over an eight-year cycle. Um, it's hard to say what HCD will say about, you know, how we can project development trends. Um, so if they come back to us and say, no, you can't use the in-progress units, um, we can very much go down to the smaller number of just the issued and complete. Um, but fortunately, you know, ADUs are not, you know, uh, we're not relying on ADUs as much as some other jurisdictions are to reach our RENA compliance. Uh, so even if HCD does come back to us and makes us lower the number, uh, we are still, we're not in risk of, uh, you know, underperforming. Yeah, I just wanted to share these numbers. Uh, I hope that maybe kind of, um, shed some more light on the process, so I'm happy to answer any questions, though.
Ross?
Thanks, yeah.
Um, if you have like a percentage of those in progress that have already gone to completion, wouldn't that help you?
Uh, so are you talking, so there, uh, you're talking about how many? Well, there's, there's 122 that are currently somewhere in the plan check process, whether they're being held. I don't know why they're, you know, not... Whether they're being held, I don't know why they're, you know, not haven't moved to issued. Um, but of the 254 ADU permits and 122 are in progress, that would say about 48 are kind of still in the pipeline, 48% are still in the pipeline and 52 are in either currently being constructed or have already been completed.
I I guess what I'm saying, if you can show that like 80% of the pipeline ADUs have actually gone to completion, that would help your argument.
Yeah, I I understand that. That's a good point. Um, I, you know, it's hard to say kind of what keeps a ADU from maybe stalling out in the plan check process or moving forward to a permit issued. It's, it's hard to say sometimes, so, but we can try to look into that a little bit more of what's the likelihood of in progress. I can say that um the uh 23 of the ADU permits that are in progress actually have the status of ready to issue. So the city has approved them, but maybe, you know, the property owner just hasn't paid the final fee. So there tomorrow, 23 ADUs could go from in progress to permit issued. So I think that's why, you know, I think why we chose to account for the in progress ones for the development trend is because I think it's important to show that, you know, over the last three, from 2018 to 2020, ADU popular, you know, uh, interest has increased every year. And I think it would be um, I think it would be, I think it's important to show that just because they're not issued yet, I mean, 2020 has 88 still in the pipeline. You know, I think it would be, you know, I I think it would make sense to somehow account for those if we're really basing these off of trend.
Hey, thank you very much.
No problem.
Not for, yeah.
Not for today or right now, but I am curious, is there a way to map where the ADUs are?
Yeah, we, we, we actually did. Um, let me see if I can pull that up real quick. Um, we included a map of, sorry, hold on one second. All right, let me just find it in the housing element. But yes, we, we did map out uh ADU production uh citywide to kind of just show the prevalence of the zone districts it's in. I know it was in this check or, hold on one second.
And here, sorry if I missed it.
Uh, it's, it's, it's in a couple of places. Um, but let me.
The main report.
Okay, I, I have one right here. It's, it's in a couple of places, but I will share it. And this is from appendix E, but it's in the report. But here's a map um showing all the ADUs in the city. Um, as you can see, most of them are in the R one neighborhood, which is why we proposed the incentive program. That is, you know, the state's purpose of these ADU laws was to essentially start finding ways to help densify the R one, which typically allows single family. But as you can see, a handful are starting to show up in these kind of orange areas, which are all multifamily. Um, this, this table, I mean, this map hasn't been updated with the new numbers I did today, but it's, it's roughly, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, Ross, so I want to ask, wait, can you bring that back up?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna word this very, very carefully because I don't want to. Okay, so how would an AD, how would a structure or a unit that appears to be ADU like get onto this map?
So, so this map is all of the, you know, the, the raw data I showed you of the statuses. We basically took the addresses and just mapped them. So these, all of these blue little, you know, identifiers are ADU permits in some uh uh some status of the process.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that I think there are any number of units that, you know, walk like an ADU, quack like an ADU and have webbed feet like an ADU, but they were built in the 60s or the 70s or the 50s and they aren't on our radar as ADUs. Some of them may have been registered for rent control purposes way back when, but some of them may not even be on our radar. They may be grandparented in. Um, do you have any data on those?
Unfortunately, no. Um, you know, we, like I said, we only started tracking ADU development in 2018. So anything prior to that, you know, 50s, 60s, but even 2016, you know, I, I don't think we have good building permit data to understand, you know, how many more are out there that we might not be aware of? Um, I don't know if there's another means to try to determine that. But yeah, I'm sure there are some that were built quite a long time ago um that uh just we don't, we don't have information on.
And what would be the right of, let's say there was a, let's say, okay, I'll, I'll give you an example. Let's say there's a single family home out there. It has a garage, it has an apartment over the garage. It was built, who knows when? Um, does that homeowner have the right to create another ADU or uh or not? And if so, are we overestimating the city's capacity for additional ADUs?
Uh, if, if we are aware that an ADU is on the property, I mean, we, we try to do our best with kind of, you know, permit history when a new uh building permit comes in to see maybe, you know, did in the 70s, was there an ADU constructed that we just, you know, didn't have a record of? Um, we wouldn't allow it uh today. But, you know, typically with building permits, you know, they're submitting surveys to us. I think we can kind of tell when, you know, there looks like there's an ADU, an existing one on the property. Also, there were, you know, back in the day, I forget when it stopped or when it started. But, you know, when someone built an accessory structure, we used to de-restrict them, uh, uh, not allowing them to convert to ADUs. Um, so there are a lot of kind of forms of these, you know, these extra recreation rooms. Um, that when we kind of find an old de-restriction, we try to remove them. Or if someone does come in and apply for a new ADU, but we see that there appears to be already one there, uh, we wouldn't allow that.
Okay, all right, uh, that's great. So um are there more questions for staff on this or anything else before we jump into the discussion? All right, okay, so here's, here's what we're gonna do. I'm gonna invite everyone to turn to page 43 of the Housing Element uh draft. Uh, this is the top of the cheat sheet. Um, we're gonna go through all the goals and policies. Um, but as we're looking at page 43, which lists out the goals, uh, I want to ask if any commissioner would like to address any of the goals, just the headline of the language. If we're all comfortable with the goal language that you see on 43, then we can start going. Um, policy by policy inside the goals, as Nina addressed, suggested last night. But I just want to know if anybody wants to wordsmith any of these goals, one through seven? Not, yes, at least I.
I don't want to address them, but I have, I would like to make a suggestion of how we proceed, which is that, that we go goal by goal, not policy by policy. And then instead of going down the line and asking everyone, people raise their hands if they want to speak to that goal.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
Not good with everyone? Yeah, Nina?
Um, the.
Go ahead.
Oh, you can't hear me?
No, you're good.
Oh, my one suggestion about the goals in general is I wish they were all like uh action words, like commands, like produce affordable housing, produce market rate housing, as opposed to these more passive affordable housing production, which is, I don't know, just, that's just a small grammar thing, but it just sounds like we actually need to do something with the, our goal is action. That's all. So it doesn't really involve changing words, just changing parts of speech.
Sean, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, are, are we going to the goals and then commenting on the programs beneath them?
Yeah.
I would like to see it that way.
That is what we are going to do, but I wanted to raise the question because these goals are listed out um overall, and I, and I tend to agree with Nina. I also believe that goal three needs to be written as a, with a verb at the beginning, meaning view decisions regarding distribution of new development through the lens of providing of equitable housing access to all neighborhoods. We need to start that.
From a digital, further share housing, that would be an even simpler way.
Yes, I'm guessing that, I'm guessing that HCD is inviting us to say this in our own words as a teacher would tell a student. So I would propose that we write goal three to start with the verb view. View decisions or make decisions regarding distribution of new development through the lens of providing equitable housing access to all neighborhoods. Does anybody have an issue with that?
Sorry, to clarify, uh, are you talking about goal four, right?
Yeah, that's, it's not goal three.
It's goal four?
No.
On, on page 43, it's, it's goal three.
That's not the way it appears on another page. On page 20, on, on page 20, it says something different.
Yeah, so.
Wow.
The policy, they focus, yeah. It's not like the actual listing and I think maybe it was just a little ordered. Yeah, goal, goal three is preserving the existing supply of housing.
Then, yeah, I'm looking, if you look at page 43 of the PDF, you, you have, and I'm not sure what you're telling HCD the goal is, but you have, you have active sentences on page 43 for each goal that function as mission statement for each goal. Are those operative or not?
The descriptions and the programs in this table are mixed up because I couldn't figure it out. So I ignored that table because it didn't correlate with the actual listings in chapters three and five.
Yeah, it's not.
I'm happy to ignore this page if, if it's not what HCD is going to be judging. But if HCD is judging it, I think that sentence should start with a verb. That's all.
So page, page 43 isn't like, it doesn't relate to the order of the goals afterwards. It's more just like what they focus on generally, it's like a general listing. So. Yeah.
Okay, then let's forget it. I still think, I still think you should start that sentence with a verb, but let's skip it. Let's go to goal, let's go to page 44, let's go to page 44, right? Page 44 has the goal and the policies below it. There are eight goals associated with goal one. Let's see it is, would anybody like to discuss any of the goals uh listed under goal one?
I, I still have a question, Sean, I have a question. On, on page 15, I thought that was our cheat sheet, is the goals and the programs that that's.
We're not doing programs yet, we're doing goals and policies first and then we're coming back.
The goals say something different, okay.
Right, Leslie, that's just what Jim said.
I know.
The, what is on page 43 is a summary of the goal. Once you start on page 44, the goals match what is on the table. So we are starting on page 44 and we are looking at the goals and policies, not the implementation program.
So we're gonna work our way through the goals and the policies together, as Nina suggested last night. And then when we're done with the goals and the policies, then we're gonna circle back to the programs because the programs are dependent on the goals and the policies. So let's see, does anybody want to talk about anything in goals one? How many hands do I see? I'm just gonna go, okay, we'll start from the back of these alphabet with Jim, go for it.
I have a question on policy 1.4. Talk about, does ensure the design of new housing developments in context sensitive, is context sensitive? What does staff mean by that? And I'm a, and, because I'm a little concerned that this is gonna say, you know, consistent with the surrounding community. And when you're building affordable housing, you're always building at a higher density and intensity than the surrounding community.
I think, whoops. But I think this is, um, if, as you see, the title is really about the design of housing and we were, um, we had quite a bit of discussion around this to, you know, not using the word compatible or what have you. And I was actually thinking about precisely that situation, given the proposals in the draft Housing Element, um, you know, where you may have affordable housing in areas where it doesn't exist right now and looks different. So, you know, I think we've, we've used the words like appropriate to the neighborhood so that it's, it, it's not about like you couldn't have the mass and the scale necessary to do that, you know. But when, when we look at design of new buildings, you know, context is always something that's, that's considered. But it's not something that, um, you know, is a barrier, uh, you know, to the, to, to being able to for, for that housing project to be achieved. Um, so that's, that's, you know, context sensitive is kind of something we, you know, that, we, we were trying to phrase that in terms of being, being, you know, considerate of what's around um and being responsive to that, um, but not saying that, you know, you, because everything around you is, you know, a two story building that, you know, that new affordable housing project can only be, you know, two stories, um, that there's just attempts to relate to what's around it.
Is that kind of a design compatibility?
Yeah, we, again, again, we're careful not to use the, to use compatibility. Um, because although that's used throughout, um, you know, has been used in our codes and, you know, you don't, you don't really see that show up a lot, like for example, in the downtown community plan. Um, you know, we like to think about more as like context sensitive and appropriate. You know, so it's more about the relation shifts to, to what's around it as opposed to compatible. You know, appears to say that, you know, there's a, a sameness, um, you know, uh, to the, to the form, that's not what's intended here.
Okay, I still think it's gonna be considered, I hear what you're saying, you're trying to parse those words. But I, that's the first thought I thought when I said context sensitive, that it was compatibility. I still am a little concerned that that will be. And I would love if we could find a alternative, some alternative verbiage there.
How about responds to the, to its context?
Responsive, that's exactly.
Yeah, is responsive?
The same thing.
Well, anybody who wants the buildings, the new buildings to be the same as the old buildings will interpret it that way, but the rules are the rules. And, you know, we can put somewhere what compatible means in our zoning ordinance if it's really a serious problem. That compatibility doesn't mean it's the same size and the same style. It just means that it's, we could say harmonious, how about harmonious? That's one of our little.
No, I think it runs in the same, I think that runs into the same.
Why don't we end this, why don't we end this sentence by saying, without jeopardizing the housing production objectives of this element or something like that?
What is it, what does the whole policy add to the housing? I mean.
Sydney, stay pretty. We, we still live here. And none of these things get any kind of discretionary review. So we want to put some kind of nudge to people that they are supposed to, you know, look left and look right before they start drawing.
Well, that's why I like responsive, because, because.
I like responsive too.
Even if a building is, even if a building is substantially larger, let's say, than a neighboring building, there are ways to do it that are responsive to what's happening around it as opposed to, you know, totally clashing or perhaps even overwhelming.
I, I have the same concerns Jim does.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm more comfortable with responsive than on, on text sensitive, but they're very similar.
Yeah, they are.
Unless there's a lot of people who share that concern that we should take it out, then why don't we change it to context sensitive? Um, I'm sorry, change it to um the phrase you just used and move forward.
Okay.
Responsive.
Nina, do you want to give us language there?
Just change context to, uh, development is responsive to uh adjacent development or not adjacent.
How about adjacent, how about adjacent designs? Because, because we're very, well, no, but we're very clear that design is not the same as massing or size. And I think what this is about is about design, the, the appearance as opposed to the size.
Well, we can, you're saying, if you say it's responsive to the adjacent design, then if there's a Spanish building, they're gonna have to build a Spanish building.
Oh, no, we don't want.
Can I say, can I say something? Can I say something? If you look at the CCSM projects going up now on 14th Street, you do not want them to look like the buildings next door. They're horrible.
Exactly.
So the context is a mess.
But sometimes, can I make this in justice? Yes.
We create responsive to the context, I think you could, number one. It's, it is one policy amongst many, so I think you could. And it's not an objective standard, so you couldn't deny a housing project based on the fact that it's one or two stories taller, right? Um, Jim, so I, I hear your concern and I agree. But I think if we say something like responsive to the context and then we, we view it in the context of this entire housing element. I think we shouldn't get too concerned that a project would get denied just based on that single policy.
Okay. Let's, um, okay, let's, let's, uh, can we keep, are we okay with that language? Okay. Um, Heidi, the process, do we vote on all of this?
So what is on your agenda is a recommendation to the city council? And I'm sorry, Jane, would you like to?
All right, I, I was just about to say that, um. I think our desire is that at, at the end of it, on your agenda, it's, it's a, it's a recommendation to the council. So, you know, I think what the commission has done in the past is maybe consider taking straw polls. I don't think you have to vote on every single, uh, discussion point you're, you're having here. Um, you may, you know, it, it sounds like if, if you're going through the goals and the policies. You know, you can go through it the way that you are and make the suggestions and move on. Um, and I think what the commission has done in the past is where maybe you've hit a point where, you know, there, there may not be consensus on something that you want to take a straw poll. You can do that, um, as a way to get a sense of the commission, you know, and then, and you kind of package it up together at the end.
Right, and then the, and the recommendation will be to presumably approve or disapprove of the housing element. Pursuant to the amendments or amendations offered by the commission.
Right, right, yeah, it would be a recommendation, yeah, to the council to, you know, direct staff to transmit it with these changes. And, and we, and we have, um, Carrie has a table that's been tracking all of the changes, like suggestions we heard last night. Um, and we'll add those, add on to that tonight.
Okay, so.
I'm also, I'm just a more thing, Sean, I'm also, um, channeling my inner Richard McKinnon. And I'm going to take notes on our changes and our, the language as we get them.
Fantastic.
I'm channeling you.
I am not seeing, I am not seeing a desire for a straw, I'm, I'm seeing consensus. So I, I just want to ask colleagues, if we get to something where you are not sure, you want a straw poll, you want us to actually. Go to the mat on it, please tell me, raise your hand, ask for a straw poll. I'm hoping we can get a lot of this done by consensus. But if there isn't consensus, I don't want to, like, I don't want to cover stuff up here. I want to make sure that we're, we're actually reflecting the diverse views of our diverse commissioners. So, um, anything else in policy, Mario?
You're muted.
Muted, Mario.
About that, I'm having a hard time understanding where I am in this process. When I look at these goals and, you know, whether there's seven or eight, or they have different letters, they're very high level. They're almost like mom and apple pie. Who would be against more affordable housing? Who would be against special needs house? They're virtually meaningless. So all encompassing, I, I don't think, I mean, we don't need to spend any time on this unless someone has some bug that they just can't stand a word. But I'm thinking that the most valuable thing we can do, that the city council is give them direction specifically on what they should do. In the housing overlay, or what they should do with the, you know, R one up zoning, whatever it is, that's, that's important. They're asking for our best professional advice. They're not asking for generalities. I think we can go very quickly through this. And for example, I'll give you an example. Where in all of this matrix was a proposal to lower the story heights allowed? In the first floor of commercial, you know, there's a lot of debate on that spring, how big it should be. Uh, where does it fit in this? What, what would we recommend either the planning staff? Or the city council about that particular issue? I'm just using that as an example. There are probably bigger issues that we should think about recommending, but I'm just, I'm trying to understand where we are in this. Maybe you can help us get there.
Well, the idea is that these, that these policies are the overarching policies. And that we're going to then, we're hopefully going to go through these quickly, as you say, and then go back into the program. But there may be policies with which people disagree or policies that are inadequate. Um, and so, uh, I'll, I'll give, I'll offer an example as my primary comment on this policy. Uh, which is that, um, in her letter to us, Amy Anderson, um, noted that we were a little bit weak on. Um, uh, innovative construct, I mean, she's making a program point, but on innovative construction and, um, streamlining. And I would like to see the policies here, um, where we're looking at innovative and sustainable housing design and streamlined housing process. I would like to see these policies, um, worded more strongly. I think council has given direction on these issues. It is not enough to continue to evaluate and provide an expedited and coordinated permitting promise and design review. I think our policy should be streamline the process wherever possible, right? And come up with a permissive, in a customer focused way. Um, I don't think continuing to evaluate and provide, that's not a policy. That's like, uh, okay, we still, you know, we're going to think about it. I'd like to see that it is city policy that where a process can be streamlined, it is streamlined.
Well, we actually, both of those things are in the programs, so.
They are, but if you read the policy, the policy is not written. Um, whereas, right, so the, the policy one point five, I think is written as a policy very well. In other words, if there is a question, how does Santa Monica feel about innovative and sustainable construction techniques and materials? And environmentally sensitive design, our city policy would be to promote it. Therefore, we can go down and we can talk to the inspectors, we can talk to building and safety. How are you going to be promoting this in your work? I think in the streamlined housing process, the verb should be streamlined. It doesn't, it shouldn't be evaluate.
Well, that's in the program, Josh, that's in the program.
No, it's in the policy, it's policy.
Strike out the words continue to evaluate is, it says, provide an expedited and coordinated process. That's what you want, right?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Okay, so that's good.
Might I suggest? Because I generally agree with Mario. Number one, number two, this is part of like what. Planning, planning is and how plans work, which is like goals, objectives, policies, implementation, right? And so it's partly just like how these planaries work. So I, but I understand your frustration, so if people have specific changes they want to make. Let's not spend hours and hours discussing, let's adjust the change. If somebody disagrees with the change, we can have discussion, but otherwise. Policy one point five, okay?
I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
So do I, so we've got changes to policies one. One point four and one point eight.
I agree, but let me, I want to just respond to something Mario said, because I think this is important. Is these are kind of mom and apple pie and they're very difficult to define problems with. I think where we can refine them, we absolutely should. I think in a lot of this situation though, we're really kind of kicking the can down to the implementation process. Like Mario talked about the heights and the ground floor heights. You have a policy to adjust to, a, a program and a policy to adjust heights. That's not really going to happen in my mind until we get, until we get into that implementation process. I think today we could say, we want to make sure when you look at heights, you look at the ground floor heights and you look at. When, and you look at when, um, when high-rise requirements kick in. Those are things that we can tell, we can kind of say these is what we would look at when we do the implementation. But really, this is all very general. And it's not until we get into the implementation in six months where we get into these details. Is, is my view of it, so I, I don't know if, if people all agree with that. I see a few nods.
Yeah, if, if I can just chair, if, if I can just jump, jump in here. You know, this is, this is general plan level, program level, right, in the goals and policies. Goals, goals by their definition are aspirational, right? It's why they sound positive. They are the vision of what we see for housing in our communities. So they won't point out all the problems and issues because it's where we want to be, right? That's the end state. And the policies talk about sort of how do we get there, like what supports that goal? Um, the questions I'm hearing right now are at a very, very granular, granular level. Um, you know, you won't see something about adjusting the ground floor height in a policy. Cause really, that is an implementation action. That's, that's code writing as, as we've talked about before. The programs themselves are really the closest thing in here and, and we have to, like, under, under the completeness checklist for the housing element. We must have goals and policies and like implementation actions. They, they require us to have that. So whether you like them or not, you have to have them. Um, so the, 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 the housing programs are the action items. And, you know, any specifics, whether it be ground floor height, parking, you know, and any number of, of issues that speak to development standards. I would encourage thinking about those under the umbrella of the broad program, you know, something that says. The city, you know, will evaluate, you know, or will seek to, you know, change development standards to support housing, something like that, right? There, there are, there are a couple of programs that speak to that. And in any one of those, like, that's where that evaluation would occur. But you wouldn't be something, I, I, I would not recommend doing something so specific that locks the city in when you haven't even had a discussion or analysis. As to how exactly you want to do that yet. Um, you know, so you don't get to something as precise as we want to lower the ground floor to eight feet, like, you know, that's not. Because, because whatever you put in the program, that is a commitment from the city to actually do it. And if you don't do it, you know, then the city's out of compliance. So that's why it is written at that sort of a little bit higher level to say, we're going to look at it. And like our, our desired outcome is this, but we're not actually speaking to exactly precisely all of the little bits that get there. That's, that's part of the implementation stuff, you know, that's coming later with, with the code. And that, and, and as I said, that is something that we plan to bring together with the final housing elements. You kind of see how it all goes together, uh, which is again, a little bit unusual for our strategic plans, but for the purposes of this, it just really seemed to make sense.
Okay, but here's, here's where I'm, so I agree with everything you just said. Let us, please stay on the policies because for the very same reason. I believe that we need to make sure that the policies that we are recommending to council actually accomplish the goals of the housing element. So I'm going to give you an example, which is policy one point seven, review of housing constraints. Simply says, we're going to review this stuff. It doesn't actually say we're going to do anything about it. In other words, our policy is to go, huh, those taxes.
Right, Sean, then you have to look at the implementation that goes with that. This is how, this is how these are written.
But what Jane is, what Jane is telling us is that our program locks us in. But at the highest level, we should be either agreeing or disagreeing. That city taxes, fees and regulations should not be permitted to constrain housing development. Or it should be permitted to constrain housing, like, you know. I, I, there are a lot of people out there who think that we have all these very high level pro housing policies. And then we undercut them with our taxes, fees and regulations. That's a, that's a view in this community.
Okay, then I would, just again, if there are specific changes you want to make to policies.
Okay.
Let's talk about what those are. So let's go.
But we're going to go back, okay. Everyone, we're going to go back to the plan. Mario raised a valid point. We're going to go back to the plan. We're going to work through these goals and policies. We're going to keep our comments brief and to the point on the things we want to change. We're going to get to the programs as quickly as possible.
Let's do it, we get it, let's do it.
I would like to revise one point seven to say periodically review city taxes, fees and regulations. To ensure that they do not constrain housing development. Or on reason, do not, right, do not constrain housing development. Okay, are we ready for goal two and policies two? Nina?
Um, I would like after the word workforce to add artists because.
Where are you?
On goal two in the, it's one sentence.
Right.
So I want to add artists because I feel like that's a whole other category of housing that might not even compete. With, uh, the regular affordable housing. And I have some ideas for other ways to weave in. An opportunity to find completely different kind of funding that's not the funding that we normally use for affordable housing that. Bons to artists and that, that should be an opportunity that's part of this plan.
So we just add the word artists to the goal.
So add the word artists to the goal. And then in the word policy where it says new fund, uh, policy two point six under new funding services. They to explore, add explore private arts funding for artist housing and just leave it at that.
I'm sorry, I need.
So the new, I'll re, I'll reread it, so the new goal two now reads. Housing production for all income categories, including for the community's workforce, AMA, artists, AMA. And most vulnerable communities. There's a parallelism issue, but it's fine. Um, and then goal two point sit, policy two point six.
Hold on. Sorry, and I hope staff is also doing this because it's.
Yep, we are, we're holding, we're, we're following.
Policy two point six, work with local nonprofit community organizations to tap into new funding sources. And support local capacity development, affordable housing on an ongoing basis. New additional sentence, work with fund, Nina, what is it, work with.
Explore private arts funding for artist housing.
There you go. Got it. Alice?
Uh, I'd like to see what the temperature of the room is for, uh, deleting the last clause of policy two, two point five, which says, uh. Uh, including possibilities for employer provided housing. Uh, my concern is this might undercut the efforts we've made to, um, get rid of corporate owned housing. And I'm curious if my colleagues agree.
I, I would be more comfortable adding the word permanent housing, uh, so that it is possibilities for employer provided permanent housing. Um, rather than housing in general.
Good idea.
Yeah. Cause I think there's always this, this fantasy hope that we're going to get some large employers who are going to build housing for their employees. So I think we would want to hold on, but I like the suggestion.
Specifically, uh, submit, um, two of our largest employers are the school district and the college district. And both of them, certainly the school district has already empowered a state law to develop, um, affordable housing for its workforce. So we would want to, we don't want to remove that clause.
Yeah, I like.
Okay, anything else? Thanks. Anything else on goals and policies two?
I'm done with all of them, just so you know.
May I, may I ask a question about policy two, just the addition of the artist language and why? Certainly understand adding it to the more specific policy, but certainly that would be included in the workforce. Um, listener, I'm just wondering, I'm wondering about calling out a specific category of workforce there.
Okay, I, I just thought maybe you would rather do that so it's justified including it here. And then I had an idea for, uh, you know, more detail to put in a program of exploration. It's not a binding kind of program, it's an exploring program, but still. So if you don't think we need it to.
No, I don't think so. I think it would be less confusing to, to, um. You know, because then you're talking about, because the other policies and looking at the other policies, they speak about other sorts of, um. Uh, segments of the workforce altogether.
Okay, fine.
Um, can I, I, I don't want to bend to the, too much into the weeds on that, but you make an interesting point, which is that. Um, you know, we have this sentence in the second paragraph of the goal, the city's economy is supported by diverse variety of industry sectors. Um, it remains heavily dependent on the food and accommodation and retail trade sectors. There's actually an extraordinarily high proportion of Santa Monica residents. I think it's north of forty percent who, who make money in the creative economy. Um, and creative economy jobs are not typically, they're not, you know, the funding for those jobs is not the same. So if we were to take the word artist out of the goal header, I think it could be helpful for the element to. Address in a sentence, maybe, um, you know, the arts economy, the importance of the arts economy to. Santa Monica, Santa Monica's residential workforce. And recognize that the income stream is not, is more episodic sometimes and we need different housing options. Um, relating to live, work and those up income streams. Would that address, Nina, like, would that background help?
I think it would be. What, what is the, what is the wording you're talking about?
Well, if you look at goal two point O and you look at this second paragraph of text. Um, you would say something like, you add a second sentence saying, and I don't know the percentage. Somebody, it's been published, but like the second sentence would say something like X percent of Santa Monica residents, right? Um, are employed in the creative economy.
Not appropriate for the goal. You could, we could. You could, we could create a new policy that...
No, no, I'm not in the goal. I'm not in the goal, folks. I'm in the second paragraph.
It's in the narrative.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm in the background, and I'm asking staff to just add a sentence of background explaining why arts economy offers different housing challenges. That's it. It's one sentence that's...
The language can be cut and bleeped out of the loose. It's in the loose, talks about how important arts are to the community. So I agree, you should add it, and we'll just ask staff to find that out of the...
Perfect, that's great.
You don't want to say creative workforce, because that is Google and Yahoo.
No, we want to say the arts, right.
Yeah, later on, I have a suggestion for maybe helping us define who those people are who need assistance with housing. But we'll get there later.
Okay, well, Goal 3, let's look at Goal 3.
Uh, I've got two suggestions for Policy 3.2. Uh, I'd like to, this is a preservation of naturally occurring, indeed restricted, affordable rental housing. I'd like to add rent-controlled housing into that. It is naturally occurring, affordably in certain circumstances, but I'd like to add rent control into that. And then, I wish we could say something that's a little bit stronger than just encourage the preservation. I would be willing to go so far as adding language that says something to the effect of, uh, the conversion or displacement or loss of naturally occurring, uh, indeed restricted affordable housing should only occur in exceptional circumstances.
Alice, can I ask a question? Is an exceptional circumstance to you a site that is under density, underdeveloped? And that we want to add, because I think the goal is to get more housing. And I understand we want to protect tenants as well, but I see a little bit of a disconnect. So I want to get and understand what you mean by exceptional.
Well, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of a way to, uh, say, you know, encourage the preservation in slightly stronger words. And I'm struggling to think of how to do it in a way that balances all of the concerns, like, including what you just said. Um, and, I don't know, if the rest of the room is comfortable with it as is, then I won't force the issue.
Well, I think, I mean, if it gives you any comfort, I mean, things like SB 330 require everything to be rebuilt at the income level, and then we're looking to extend that past the 2025. So, again, it's bad if they get displaced. We have very strong policies to protect them and give them economics. And then we'll get the units back. So I would be a little reluctant to change that.
I have to agree with you, Jim.
Yeah.
I'll just note for the record, then, that I wish we could use a word as strong as encourage, but, uh, I'll, yeah, I'll cut it off there.
But do we have consensus on adding rent controls to that policy?
I think we do, right?
Yes, we do. I guess what I'm wondering is if there's a, if there's a middle ground here, which is, how do we, what could we as a city do after 2025? Let's assume SB 330 fires. What would be a policy of the city in the absence of state regulation? That, what is a policy, what we want to affirm? I think it's in this document.
So, yeah, there is a program that seeks to establish essentially similar things to what SB 330 does at a local level, so it will sustain beyond that 2025 date.
Right, John?
Mm-hmm.
I just want to add that unless you are removing rent-controlled units through Ellis, if you remove them through the other removal process of the board, you have to replace the rent-controlled units. And that's exactly what Jeff Worth is doing in the Social and Avenue project. Now, there's already a replacement of rent-controlled units.
So, like, let's look at Policy 3.4. I would like to take out the consistent with the state law. Like, I think, um, uh, you know, the city shall ensure the replacement of multi-unit housing that is demolished. Or the city shall, uh, you know, to the extent possible, right? If there's, unless state law prohibits it. But why would we lean on state law? Why don't we just want to say we want to replace multi-unit housing?
We already do. Through the rent control law, we already do require replacement of rent control.
Right. So why do we need that consistent with state law?
I have no idea.
Okay, can we take out those four words?
I have no objection.
Alice, does that help? Does that get it, what you're, I'm trying to get at, what you're trying to accomplish, which is the city's policy needs to be more full-throated, and we need to not be falling back on what California may or may not be up to?
Uh, yeah, I agree with your suggestion. Yeah, I mean, again, you know, we're just worth living here, and I was just trying to find language. But, yeah, it's all good, thanks.
Did you understand what I said? Do you understand that Santa Monica already requires that?
I do. But I'm suggesting that SB 330 could expire, and we have a program down the line where we're saying, even if it expires, we want to try to do what SB 330 is requiring. Even if we don't have to.
I understand, that's true. But rent-controlled units are already protected.
That's great.
Okay, so I think we're in agreement on this. Let's stop beating this one.
Let's keep going, yeah. Anybody else on policy in Chapter 3? Anybody else have policy they want to talk about? Nope? Okay, let's go to Chapter 4. Anything?
Only to say that, only to say that Policy 4.1 sounds like activity centers to me, and I support that.
Okay, I, I, um, I do want to say something about this, because this is one of our affirmatively furthering fair housing. Um, I have a concern, I don't have a wording suggestion. I think it's somewhere in Policy 4.2, and I'm hoping that you might have language for me. I am concerned that we are, I know that HCD links race and economics. I get it. And there's history there. I am concerned that we not imply that all racially equitable housing is affordable housing, that our commitment to racially equitable housing involves housing of all kinds, not just affordable housing.
I support that.
How do we say that?
I think you just delete the word equitable. Distribution of housing for all income levels.
Yes. And I think we add the word above moderate income persons. I think we have to add above moderate income.
Okay, isn't above part of income levels?
No, but encourage fair distribution of all housing types throughout the city for extremely low, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income persons.
But why don't you just say everybody?
Yeah, just say all.
Right, exactly. Encourage fair distribution of all housing types throughout the city for people of all backgrounds and income, of all backgrounds and income levels, including the most vulnerable communities and housing insecure. Does that work for everyone?
Okay.
Of all backgrounds and income levels.
Sure, if I can jump in. So the reason that policy is very specific to affordable housing is because that is one of the requirements in AFFH in terms of distribution of, like, that is the original genesis of the AFFH rule, you know, was kind of not like over-concentration.
Oh!
Of, yes, of concentration of essentially like low-income households. So, you know, it's a distribution in areas where it has never occurred, as an example, right? Because originally it was targeted towards public agencies and, you know, the sort of funding that you provide for affordable housing. It just doesn't keep being put in the same place over and over again. So that's why that policy is very particular to that. I think in terms of your interest in having, you know, market rate or like, for all income levels, 4.3 talks about sort of targeted investments. It talks about, you know, housing creation strategies and market opportunities in locations that will help overcome historic patterns of segregation. So that, if you have suggestions about how that could, you know, be differently worded, that was the idea in 4.3, was to really look at the overall, you know, including all kinds of housing types.
Okay, so, all right, so, right, so can we move? I didn't understand that second sentence. So I think the phrase "throughout the city" needs to move after distribution. Encourage fair distribution throughout the city of all housing types for extremely low, very low, low and moderate income person, including the most. Because now what you're saying is distribute the affordable housing fairly and equitably through the city, which is what 4.2 says. I'm actually then articulating a different policy, which is, um, make housing available for people of all backgrounds and all income levels.
No, you're not.
Right?
You're saying affordable housing, and in some cases, that's infeasible.
But that is our policy, I mean, but it is infeasible, maybe, but that's the policy that we're being asked to approve.
Well, the part for, uh, I think that if 4.2 is talking about distributing affordable housing for all income levels in all parts of the city, then 4.3 is talking about being strategic, about strategies for everybody else. And, uh, because what we're talking, what we've been talking about, and a lot of our questions are geared toward, it seems to be about, uh, removing patterns in our zoning ordinance that are, that reflect systemic racism of the past. We should, in addition to structure changes, add zoning changes. And then I think we've done it. Because that's how we...
Okay, so how would, how would you rewrite 4.3?
I would just add after infrastructure, investments, comma, zoning changes, et cetera.
Okay. How about strategically target diverse housing creation strategies? And I don't know what market opportunities means.
That's true, I don't either, but whatever. It's fine. I mean, we don't have to wordsmith the whole thing, we just want to get the point across.
I have a question. If we adopt 4.2 as it reads, and we don't approve the Affordable Housing Overlay District, aren't we in violation of our policy?
Not necessarily, if we have another way of getting there.
Well, it's pretty explicit about, you know, having very vulnerable people.
We have, there's a bunch of, uh, programs in chapter, you know, for this chapter over there that have to do with other kinds of zoning changes that will also help make sure that affordable housing appears in new places.
Well, I don't think that's true. I don't think that's true. I'm worried about if we don't adopt the AHA, what does this do to Policy 4.2? Well, allowing duplexes and triplexes have nothing to do with affordability.
Well, there's a lot of other things in there, too.
Well, you know, there aren't. I just want to be careful that we're not violating a policy by not approving a program that furthers that policy.
Okay, well, once...
Well, we haven't voted on the program. That's why we're having this conversation. Alice?
Yeah, I just want to say for the record, I don't read Policy 4.2 as written as requiring, uh, you know, citywide affordable housing overly. There are other ways strategically zoning and other types of incentive programs to get us there.
Really?
I don't, yeah, I don't see as requiring that.
How would we get, allow some people into R1?
It also says encourage, it doesn't write, so...
Your mic's off.
That was so eloquent. By furthering, by allowing affordable housing on Montana, Maine and Ocean, we would be consistent with this policy. So there are other avenues to get there.
Let's move on.
Okay, so do we have the language for 4? We're moving the words "throughout the city" to "after distribution" in 4.2, for clarity. And then we're adding Nina's amendations. I'd love to drop the words "market opportunities," because I don't know what they mean. I would prefer to say diverse housing types. Do we do that?
Yeah, I find, I wonder if, uh, my colleagues would be eventable to adding a clause at the end of 4.3 to try to accomplish something the council, McKeon has been advocating for a long time, and say, uh, as well as programs that would allow for the right of return of historically displaced families from Santa Monica.
That's great. Any objection?
Too bad he won't be able to vote on your...
I know.
That's how you get your stuff done, is you retire.
Right. Okay, so it's Policy 4. McKeon, got it. Um, no, it's really to Kevin's credit that we, that we have that policy moving forward in the community, so. Um, all right. Are we good with, are we good with 4? Can we go to 5?
I have a question.
Leslie?
I have a question and a concern about Policy 5.2, because I don't really understand why it's there. It talks about priority homeless populations being people who have most recently lived in Santa Monica. Does that mean that someone from Culver City who's homeless is not a priority for us? That's ridiculous.
It does. It does mean that.
That's ridiculous.
Well, all right, so speaking as a former social services commissioner who has struggled with this, we have a Santa Monica priority population policy, which has been reviewed in a variety of ways, and I'll defer to Heidi and George to jump in and cut me off if I need to be cut off here. But my understanding is that the scope of the homelessness crisis is such that with our finite resources, our city is forced to triage the care that we provide. And we do whatever we can for whomever we can. But when it comes to ongoing resource intense provisions, priorities for permanent housing vouchers, things like that, we have to focus on the people who've been homeless the longest. And, um, I don't know where we are right now. For many years, you had to have been homeless for 10 years before you could get access to a voucher. Um, now it's five to 10 years, if I'm not mistaken. Um, but the resources are simply not there. And so, uh, you know, we are a city that does more for people experiencing homelessness than many others. Um, and there's been a regional failure, which is being addressed by Measure HHH and Measure H, but, um, you know, there is more demand in Santa Monica than Santa Monica has.
I get it, I get it.
You get it?
But a triage, to me, means the person is most in need. Uh, and I think, I wonder what Judge Carter would say to this? Well, I don't know, that's a rhetorical question.
Well, you know what? Perhaps the way that we should deal with this is to remove the language about those whose last permanent address was in Santa Monica. Because we have people who are part of our community, who've been living homeless in Santa Monica for a decade plus.
Right.
And they may not have an address. Their last permanent address may have been Culver City, or may have been Bend, Oregon, or whatever. Um, at this point, I think they've been around long enough that, you know, we owe them some duty of care. So maybe we could simply delete that clause and allow others to define what the priority population is.
Good idea.
Is that good?
Yes, that's good.
So we're deleting those whose last permanent address was in Santa Monica, but we're leaving the rest of it?
I mean, I'm going to be honest with you guys, is that if we could get, in my job, and I'm trying to... I mean, I'm going to be honest with you, you guys, is that if we could get, in my job, and I'm trying to do this, if I could commit to that we're living on the streets near the projects, we're going to get into the projects, it would be so much more acceptable. And so I think any way we could try to get there would be helpful. Um, I, I ju-, I think your, your suggestion is fine. I just wanted to make that editorial comment, that I think there is value in trying to get the people off the streets near the projects into those projects.
I agree.
Yeah.
They may be, they may be from Culver City.
Right, but, but they're No, but, I mean, I, I, we all have our stories. I still remember having done a drive-by, a drive, a, a, a drive-along, ride-along with SMPD. Drive-by, no, it felt like a drive-by because it was one morning. Um, but it was, it was a ride-along with SMPD, and, and, and there was a person camping on the, on the bluffs who was employed in our city and had nowhere to live, was not making enough to live anywhere nearby. And was employed in our city and was living in a tent on the, in Palisades Park.
Probably in the planning, probably in the planning department.
It's heartbreaking. Okay, are we good with policy? Um, we're good.
Sorry Chair, just, I, I just want to note that, that proposed change to 5.2, we, we, we'll probably just need to look into that. Um, it, it may be completely inconsistent with, uh, you know, current policy established by the council with respect to addressing homelessness. So I just want to put a caveat on, on there. We, we noted down, but we may have to just circle back on that one.
Okay, I mean, what I'm, what I'm saying is that if you are, however, so this notion of priority homeless populations, I would suggest that if it's the permanent, the permanent address is what provides you with a priority, then that doesn't need to be listed in our document. That's all I'm saying. It may well be that that's what is, you know, how you define priority homeless, but otherwise the words priority is meaningless for us as land use people. We're not choosing who the priorities are. Right?
I also, I also want to highlight that I'm a little concerned, and I remember having this before, is that when the commission makes a recommendation, we should, that recommendation should get moved to city council, not get carved out. They can say that there's a reason why we don't agree with it, that should get passed on to council if we make that recommendation.
Yeah?
No, no, yeah, yeah, I, I absolutely know, but I, I wasn't suggesting that it would be removed for any reason. I just wanted to, for, for the entire commission's understanding, you know, just that it may not be, like, there, there may be a caveat on that one, you know, and we usually note, um, you know, where the commission has made a, made a recommendation that maybe staff doesn't agree with or what have you, like, we would note that. Um, you know, so I just wanted to make sure for transparency that we were explaining that that might be one we're going to have to take a look at.
Right, okay, so what Jim said is important. Thank you. Yeah, but what Jim said is important, but I also want to again stress, we are not, we are the planning commission. We're not making policy on who, uh, um, gets service in Santa Mon- um, gets service in Santa Monica, and and I don't want to comment on the permanent address. I don't think we should, that's not our role. We shouldn't be recommending that policy, and we're clearly not. If that's council's policy to make, that's council's policy to make, but I'm thinking we don't want to go on record endorsing that policy.
Let's move on, you said that.
In P, poll six.
Let's move on.
Poll six, anybody got poll six?
I, I just question here, sorry, do we get HH funding? We're in the county, HH coming, comes to us, correct?
H, not HH.
H, just H.
Yep.
So I just raised on six, three, we're looking for funding, that's available to us, but anyways, I don't have any changes.
All right. Seven. Alice?
Uh, just a minor suggestion for, uh, seven point one. Uh, maybe we can change it to say continue to enforce fair housing laws, uh, and add the phrase including but not limited to laws prohibiting arbitrary discrimination, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep. Are there other laws besides fair housing laws that we care about in this context? Anti-discrimination rules?
United States Constitution?
Right, so should we continue to enforce laws including fair, including but not limited to fair housing laws prohibiting such and such?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Sure.
Yep. Okay. All right, uh, anything else on seven? Oh, okay, now, uh, let us now move back to page fifteen.
Fifteen?
And, yeah.
Three?
I'm sorry?
Not sixty-three?
Not sixty-three, what's on sixty-three? I thought we're done with it. Did I skip a goal?
Implementation programs.
No, 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 it's just faster on page fifteen, because all of these implementation programs have lots of, lots and lots of detail, but if you go to page fifteen, they're, they're nicely framed on a screen for you. It says the same stuff, it's just, it'll, it's, you can see all of one A through F on, on page fifteen. One through, one A through one
My notes.
Oh, well, go where your notebook are. All right, we're on goal one programs, uh, and what I'm going to suggest is, does anybody have, if, I mean, I'm going to go down the list here, because I think what we should do is, um, hear from, uh, hear from, we'll start with Commissioner Frando Benardi. Uh, do you have comments on any of the programs in goal? Otherwise, we're going to be here forever.
Why are you going to go down the list? Why don't you just do what we did last time? If people have comments, they'll raise their hand.
Okay. Anything from one A? All right, Nina and then Elisa. One A? Going ones?
Um, oh, sorry.
Nina and Elisa, yeah.
Just generally, first of all, I would like to go, well, no, whatever, but one thing that I'm, this is where the rubber hits the road, and so what I wanted to suggest, because, um, you know, we do, this goes to council now, and then it comes back to us with a final version and goes to council again, that perhaps in the staff report that goes with it, that it's a little bit more explicit than this draft has been for us so far, about exactly where zoning changes would be and how they would be determined, just so we don't get into a situation where people are surprised that in order to be compliant, we might have to upzone some places to four-story for, four stories for tier one, or whatever it is. I just want to make sure that the corresponding zoning implications are somehow explicit when this moves to the next step. So that was
I, you're saying, do you have some comment on that for us to, can we be helped, like?
No, I think, I think I hear what you're saying, is that there's just a, uh, a discussion of the outcome. You know, what this might be leading to. Um, I think we tried to make that explicit in the planning commission report. Um, I, you know, I don't think we were, we were, uh, shy about saying that, you know, what this leads to is, is an upzoning, you know, but that's the proposals and upzoning across the city um, for support of FARS, but I understand uh, what you're saying, and, uh, we are, we're writing the council report, uh, tonight, so.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Sorry, question.
They're writing it as we talk. Leslie?
Um, I have a question on one A. Um, you know, you've been suggesting that we basically do away with tier one, because by the time we're finished with it, it's going to be bigger than tier two. So why is this, why does that, how does that relate to this first paragraph? If we, if we redo tier one, so it's bigger than tier two, since I read the housing analysis what we're talking about, you don't want to say tier two maximums. Am I missing something? Can you hear me?
So, so I can start, and then, and then, uh, the planning manager can jump in if she'd like. So that language comes from the current IZO for housing process thresholds. So what, what the council approved was two classes of projects that would get moved into administrative approvals.
I remember that, right.
Right, so, so that's where that language comes from. I think that, yes, staff does have a proposal to perhaps eliminate tier one, if that is, um, what council determines to do. So what you're suggesting is perhaps we should loosen it, but I think the intent of that program is to ensure that the adminis-, the ministerial approvals get carried forward.
The proposal is actually to eliminate tier two and to boost up tier one, so it doesn't correlate with this language.
I, I understand. You're suggesting that we maybe, that we maybe discuss moving more projects to a ministerial approval project process, rather than the very specific language that you're looking at.
Right, right, right.
I'm going to add to that. Can I add to that, which is that, which is that, um, this implies that we haven't done this yet in the language. And I believe that it would be important, this goes to, this goes to Nina's point. We've already done this through the IZO, so I think it would be helpful to state that the city shall make permanent interim amendment, you know, currently interim amendments as necessary to do this. I think we should make it clear to the public that this has already been done, and if we bring, if we bring this out for permanent implementation, we're not doing something new from scratch, we're actually just taking something that was approved temporarily and making it permanent.
That's not my point. My point is you may not be at tier two. We don't want to make it
I know.
So I have some very specific
I did have one suggestion for this, which is that
Elisa and Nina?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have some very specific language changes. I don't like the way this policy is written, I think it's vague. Um, and so I don't know if it's appropriate to share my screen or not.
Why not?
Thank you. Um, do I have that? Can someone give me permission to do that?
You should be able to click that picture on the right side of your screen, there's like a little mountain.
Just like a little mountain icon on the right.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, yeah. Share screen. I don't know, did my comments get, get put into the record?
Uh, no, we did not, because I think we, we viewed those more, you were just asking kind of like clarifying questions, um, as opposed to Commissioner Fresco's that had like edits on there, so we did not post those into the record.
Okay, well, I, I'd like those to go into the record, because I have very specific requests about changing, um,
Yep.
language, and for some reason this isn't working, but I agree with Leslie about that, you know, this is not going to be tier two, and I, I think it basically needs to read, um, to, the city shall make amendments, yada, 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 as necessary to allow booking projects that are either a hundred percent affordable, are subject to the Housing Accountability Act, um, or include a certain number of moderate income units to be reviewed through an administrative process. I'm not able to share my screen, so I don't know why this isn't coming up. I'd also like to add language that, um, that makes it very specific that the amendments that we're seeking. Um, so one of the issues that a number of people have talked to me about with the housing, with the applicability of the Housing Accountability Act in Santa Monica is that, um,
What happened?
Frozen?
It froze.
She froze.
Okay.
Well, so
I'm trying to, I'm trying to put, you know what I'm going to do is I have, I have Elisa's language. Um, I'm going to share it with the moderator. Um, and hopefully that will get to staff in some, this is, this is Elisa's language. Oh no, I can only send up to 500 characters.
He's back, he's back.
All right, here's, let's try that again.
Perhaps it could be emailed to, to Jing or, or Ross.
We already have it, I emailed it.
Read it to us.
The city shall make amendments to the loose downtown community plan DCP, Bergamot area plan BAP, and zoning ordinance as necessary to allow housing projects that do not exceed tier two maximums and are either A, a hundred percent affordable housing projects, B, are subject to the Housing Accountability Act, or C, include XX percent of moderate income units to be reviewed through an administrative process. This program would create a more streamlined application process, providing certainty for housing providers. Amendment shall include clarification that projects receiving minor amendments pursuant to Santa Monica Municipal Code 9.43.020 conform with the objective standards as used in Government Code 65589.5, or shall include the standard set forth in Santa Monica Municipal Code section 9.43.020 in the buy right density bonus incentives.
Okay, so let me provide some background on this and talk about why I'm announcing this. I have heard from a number of people that because, um, we have a lot of standards in Santa Monica, which is not a bad thing, and oftentimes, there is a determination by the city that we, that a development does not meet an objective standard, even, and that they have to come in for a minor modification. And the minor modifications in 9.43.020 are very specific. It's like five percent from a setback, or 10% from this, or 5% from that. So to me, those are actually objective standards. And I think that if a project has to come in and get one of those very, very specific minor modifications, that they should be entitled to protections under the Housing Accountability Act and the protections of streamlined zoning. Otherwise, we're sort of shooting ourselves in the foot. So our amendments either need to specify that those are objective standards, and I believe that is consistent with the law and the definition of objective standard, or we just put those as the buy right density bonus incentive. So those are the two issues I'm trying to get at. Um, I appreciate from Leslie that I think we may not need this language about tier two, we may just delete that part altogether. But, um, or maybe we say tier two maximums, or the equivalent, or something. Um, but that's what I'm trying to get at here.
I, Elisa? I have a
Yeah.
Elisa, this is, um, this is excellent. Um, and, and it will be particularly relevant if we, I don't want to speak facetious. The density bonus program actually put in place with the concessions, which I'm sure would make them housing accountability. So, I think, because that's not language, and I, I say, I approve it. I think it's good.
And then if you scroll down just a tiny bit more, so for the background section, so Paula Larmour had in her letter, she had some good, a good explanation of basically what I just said. So I had also suggested that we include that language or something similar to it in the background.
Right, so I actually have a question on that, because we, we received a number of suggestions from Paula Larmour, from Hank Koenig, from a number of other folks who are on the ground, um, working on the ground, and I would be very interested in explicitly, um, looking at that, the list of, of, of what amount to concessions that they've requested, um, and framing them as concessions, concessions in the context of a density bonus.
But in the meantime, we should do this.
We should, but there's nowhere, it's not really clear where else we would reference it. Unless we're writing a new program.
I have, I, I have another place I've referenced it.
Okay.
So when we get there, I'll talk about it.
Sure, perfect, okay, great.
And
Any other? Can we, any other comments on one A? Are we on board with the revision, revised language from Elisa? Alice?
Well, uh, uh, as far as I can see, so there's the part that says XX percent of moderate income housing, are, are you proposing a specific amount, or?
I didn't have a specific amount, I mean, I thought, and, and maybe that's going to, maybe, and Jing sort of said to me, well, that may just already be included in a project that is subject to the Housing Accountability Act. Um, so I wasn't sure if we needed to call that out specifically. I mean, I don't know, is it
Yeah, I think when you asked this question, I think what's important to note is that under the current zoning ordinance definition of 100% affordable housing, moderate income units are not included within that. It stops at basically 80% AMI. So if you were interested in adding, like for clarification, moderate income, under today's interim zoning ordinance, moderate income, if we had a moderate income project, it would be counted under, you know, projects that if it complies with the HAA, then it, you know, gets all of those processing benefits, but if the commission wanted to call moderate out separately, you know, you could say 100% affordable projects, including moderate income projects or something like that. You know, that's maybe a suggestion.
I mean, I think there are two different issues. One is, yeah, I mean, I would be in favor of including the moderate income housing projects, but my understanding from Elisa's original correspondence was that the inclusion of a moderate rate managers' unit would not, should not disqualify the project from streamlining.
Yeah, and I was actually just, I just saw that as well. So it should say 100% affordable projects, not including managers' units. And...
Right.
Yeah.
Ellis, are you?
Uh, I don't know. I would like to, yeah, get a little more specificity on, you know, what specific percentage number we're gonna include in here. But for that matter, you know, I, I agree with the goal of, you know, trying to, you know, make processes easier for people who are getting the minor modifications. I don't know if, I have my own personal legal doubts as to whether, you know, the process of approving a minor modification can be reconciled with, you know, just HAA protections generally, but you know, if we can get specificity on the percentage of moderate rate income units, then I...
So if I could hop in on the HAA issue just very quickly, so the way that the city applies the HAA is if you are requesting a minor modification, you do not meet all the objective standards of the zoning ordinance. You are not subject to the protections of the HAA, because you have to ask for a minor modification. So if I understand Michelle Pastor's proposal, we would provide this streamlined process in addition to projects that are completely protected by the HAA, but also ones that are only seeking a minor modification. Essentially.
I think that's the way to get at it. The other way to get at it...
Is the density bonus.
Is the density bonus.
Understood.
All right, Ellis.
Yeah, I mean, I think that goes to the point. I don't have the minor modification criteria pulled up here, but, you know, it would put the city in a difficult spot if, you know, say there's a criteria that says, you know, there has to be compatibility with neighboring structures, and, you know, if, you know, say the planning commission finds that there isn't compatibility, and denies the project on that basis, then you'd run into a problem with HAA.
But I hear that, but the problem is that, I mean, what I'm hearing from developers is that we either need to just change our zoning code, so you need a minor modification in fewer instances, which I think is the intent of the, I think is the intent of what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, I agree, but, you know, I just have, you know, as I've indicated, I have my own personal doubts as to whether, you know, the way it's framed would really get us across the finish line. I think the density bonus way might be might be easier.
Because we'd be converting, we wouldn't be treating the minor mods as mods. We'd be treating them as concessions.
Right, 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 right. But what about the projects that are stuck in the pipeline in the meantime?
This is a concept document. I don't, can we, we have a lot of, we are still on Goal 1A. I just, I'm on Program 1A. Can I remind everybody that we're just, we're gonna be here till midnight if we're doing this level of...
This is very important.
Right, but as written, the city has the discretion to determine which route it would like to take for this streamlining process in the future. Right? So as written, it's either through the incentives or concessions process of a state density bonus, or by allowing minor modifications to be considered protected projects. So perhaps that calls...
And then Ellis, do you have a number for moderate? You know, is it 100%, is it 50? I mean, I didn't really...
I, I don't know. I'd be curious to hear what everyone else thinks. I mean, as many as possible.
I think that we don't have any, we don't have very much moderate housing, and maybe we should just go for 100% and treat it like affordable housing.
Yeah, I'd say 50.
Yeah, 100% doesn't work.
Oh, they need to... Right, okay.
I mean, I'd say, I'd say, I mean, I'd go as low as, I'd go as low, pardon me, I'd go as low as 30 or 40 if I'm looking to get those units built. But if you're trying to kind of find a middle ground, then maybe you say like 40 or 50.
I would say 20. We have no idea what the feasibility is for...
Yeah. Does HNA have any idea what, did you run any models about feasibility of moderate income?
I don't know, Thomas or Paul, if you're able to speak to that? I mean, we didn't run specifically, but I don't know. You may have some sense.
No. Sorry, the question is about moderate income inclusionary in in otherwise market rate buildings. Is that right? Or are you talking about...
Yeah, I mean, if we were to say, like, look, you, yes, you have to build 40% or 50% or 60% to get to streamlining. Is that going, is it capable to build that, a 40% moderate, 50% market?
We have not tested the actual percentage mix. We can test that before council certainly to give you a sense of where that is. But we have not actually tested a sort of a exclusively moderate inclusionary. We tested a blend of low, very low, moderate.
So maybe, maybe the policy is written in a way that it's kind of like, moderate income is determined by feasibility study or...
Right. And I suggest a revision of your language that simply says, "or includes a feasible proportion of moderate income units."
Yeah, I like that.
Could we, could we put a minimum? Could we change feasible to minimum? So that the city can come about it at some point. So a minimum amount, a minimum number?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
But I like the fact that it's based on feasibility study as opposed to seven planning commissioners sitting around thinking what number sounds best to them.
That's right.
It will certainly inform the decision, but I think for purposes of the program, it probably gives the city a little bit more ability to implement the program.
Jim, how about a feasible minimum? Let's make that a feasible minimum, as opposed to a random arbitrary minimum. Let's say a feasible minimum proportion.
Every, everything that we do is informed by feasibility, so I would prefer, I would recommend not necessarily adding that, because certainly all of the decisions that you are making with respect to the AHPP, that the council makes with respect to AHPP and the FARs are going to be, they're going to be presented with feasibility studies, and that's going to be informing their policy decision. Though, I don't know that we need to call it out in this particular instance and not elsewhere in the document.
That's fair. Okay, are we ready for 1B?
Yeah.
Ellis, I mean, 1B, we've already adopted in ROI.
Well, sorry, just, sorry, I hate to bring us back, but sorry, where did we leave off with then the final language about bringing minor mods under the...
Elisa's bringing it later in the discussion. We're not including minor mods in this.
No, that's...
Yeah.
Oh, is that, is that what the consensus is? Okay, I hadn't realized.
That's what you said.
No, I said, well, I also have it in another place. I'm going to put it in the area.
Oh.
If I can't get consensus for, if I can't get consensus for that the minor mods are, I think they are objective, then perhaps we say the minor mods will be, then we leave in the language about giving the city the option that minor mods can be streamlined. Is that acceptable to you, Ellis? Basically what Heidi suggested?
Um, yeah, uh, I'd be curious what specific language would be, but...
So I think we wouldn't take the position, right, so we wouldn't take the position that they are subject to the HAA, right? We would take the position that if all you are seeking is a minor modification, you are subject to this ministerial streamline of the process.
Yeah, I'm on board with that.
Okay, great. And we'll have the conversation about treating minor mods as concessions later on in the discussion. Yes? Because we have to come back to the state density bonus. Okay. So streamlined, so 1, on 1B, do we have anything on 1B? Then?
Yeah. You know, I think this came up in public comment too, is we needed to find certain housing projects, because we want it to be as encompassing as possible. And, and I'm curious how, how we're running an architectural review board with objective design standards as required by state law current.
Well, a lot of people are wondering, but we have an ROI. Does our ROI define certain?
Yeah, so you have an ROI for the streamlining of the design review process. We'll be bringing that, you know, back to the commission at some point. So this one is specifically about, you know, how we improve our current process, and I think this concept of concurrent entitlement or, you know, not having it occur afterwards. And these are ideas that, you know, we've discussed with the commission before, and we'll come back with some concepts about that. With respect to objective design standards, you know, that is work yet to be done, because, you know, it's required, you know, through a variety of housing legislation, so that's something that's on the work docket. And, you know, as to your question, as to, you know, what, how does that relate to the ARB? I think we just, we haven't crossed that bridge yet. You know, in terms of what that means and the role of the board, you know, in that kind of a situation with respect to housing projects anyways.
Jing, what's the, can we eliminate the word "certain" without creating too much controversy for you guys?
We just say, "The city shall adopt new streamlining process to expedite design review."
Or housing project, housing project. I'm just saying, just don't say "certain" housing project.
Expedite design review of housing projects. Yeah.
What if we say, "The city shall extend streamlining procedures so that everything that we just discussed in 1A gets this too."
Right.
What I'm objecting to is the word "certain" seems to carve out for housing projects. And we want to build housing.
That's fine.
Let's delete "certain." Let's delete the word "certain."
Yes.
Expedite doesn't mean eliminate. It means expedite.
Is a, is a project with a ground floor commercial, that a housing project in this context?
It's, it falls back to that definition, and it has to have, what, 25%, 75% residential square footage, I believe.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's move.
Let's keep going. I have something on 1C. Does anybody else have something on 1C? Okay, I'll jump in on 1C. I would like 1C to get more specific. We had letters from Hank Koenig with a, with a list of exactly what needs to happen to the surface parking lots. I'd like to incorporate it by reference. And, which, which means also addressing the parking, parking rules, parking replacement rules, which I'd be inclined to eliminate, right, and which AB 1401, if it passes, will eliminate. But in the meantime, if it doesn't pass, we should allow for subterranean replacement parking under either the residential or the commercial parcel.
Sean, I do not disagree...
With shared parking.
I do not disagree with you. It seems to me that's an implementation policy, those kind of specifics. Though, I mean, I could be wrong, but it seems to me that's more implementation in the way, what I want to see is, is that, you know, we do say incentivize the construction of affordable, but somehow we have to talk about incentivizing the commercial property owners to sell this property off. So it has to be incentivized.
But this is just, this is just housing. This isn't affordable. So what, the way I would, my language, it would be associated with assisting commercial uses, including but not limited to removing the density caps, restoring underlying maximal and allowable density, and, and streamlining parking replacement requirements, or streamlining parking requirements. I would just like the reference to parking replacement in the policy.
That's fine. I thought it was a little too specific for the situation, but I think we need to do it, so go ahead.
I think we need to name it, because of, and they gave us a very clear list of what the specific barriers were to, to building on the lots. And it has to do with the fact that you can't dig the subterranean under an existing, if you're gonna build behind Pete's on 14th Street, to give an example, you can't dig out underneath Pete's to put in the parking. You're gonna have to go, you're gonna have to replace Pete's parking underneath that housing project. So that, that is currently not possible, and we have to be able to do that. Go on and name it. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think we have Elisa right now, so I just, Jane, you have that? Do you have language for that?
Yeah, it sounds like you want to, you want to add it to basically the end of the sentence, you know, as including, like, as examples of things that could be looked at. Yeah.
Correct, right. And streamlining or, um, streamlining parking requirements, I don't, you know what I mean, so...
Yes, yeah, we do.
Great, okay.
Are you on 1D or 1C? Are you on 1D?
We're just finishing up 1C. We're just finishing up 1C. We're adding, removing, streamlining parking requirements or some version of Hank's, and Hank's laundry list at the end of, at the end of 1C.
I have a comment on 1D.
Yeah, let's go there unless anybody else has anything on C. Okay, 1D?
I want to substitute for transit priority areas within one half mile of...
Agreed.
That reflects state law.
Any objection to that?
No, but I would like to...
Mario, Mario?
I'm sorry?
Hello?
Objecting, I was not objecting to the half mile. I was objecting to the idea that we should eliminate parking entirely for projects. I think that's not a good idea. I think we're not there as the alternative transit system is built out. We might get there, but we're not there today. And should we be discriminating against those people who are living in those apartments or those condos, because if we say we're gonna eliminate the parking, what's gonna happen is all the poor people are not gonna be parking, and all the rich people are still gonna be parking their Teslas somewhere else. I don't think it's a good mix. I think we need to still provide parking. We might be able to reduce, but we can eliminate it at this point.
This is not eliminating. It's just giving the option of not doing parking.
Well, that is a pain. Eliminating it means that there is no, no goal. There is no need for it. We're making the decision that these people shall not have cars, and I don't think that's the decision for us to make. I don't think...
We're not making that decision. We're making the decision that parking increases the cost of housing. And we're trying to keep in housing. People can choose to live there if they don't want to, and developers can choose to build it. We have interestingly heard CCSM say, "We need minimums." So they, that they will provide it themselves. We're just letting the market drive.
We're a project and having a hard time filling, because they don't have the parking for it. So, you know, I guess what I'm saying is that when we pull the rug out from under people's needs to have good, reliable transportation, not relying on Uber, which is a pricey object, you know, I don't think we're helping ourselves. I think that this is, the housing of the horse is not the top priority, but it has to be considered. It can't be eliminated.
But why are we, but we're not, we're not talking about imposing parking maximums. We're talking about simply getting the city government out of the business of regulating what the market demands for parking, because I don't think anybody's gonna build a project with zero parking. You know, downtown.
John, we're already seeing those. We're already seeing parking projects that have no parking. They have, the base is good. I can find the address, but it... But, uh, I can find the address, but it had this funny floor that looked like a basement, but it was really designed for parking, but it really wasn't committed to parking. It wasn't really dedicated to parking. So, um, in other words, even the developers are saying, we can't do it. So why are you making it so that we don't have to provide any parking? Because there's always going to be somebody who's going to have this joke of genius, yeah, eliminate parking. Make everybody ride bicycles and, you know, try to go shopping with a bicycle. Good luck. You know, it's, uh.
I have a family member who does it regularly, but okay.
It's, uh, you know, young family member, relatively young.
Yeah, come hang out at, come hang out at Bob's Market sometime, Mario. You'll see lots of people biking to shop. Ellis?
Just as a, as a point of information, um, this, um, policy, uh, is, uh, identical, I, I believe, to AB 1401.
Yes.
Which is.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the assembly, so, uh, this is sort of like the, uh, state law, whether we implement it locally or not.
Yes.
Yep.
Well, we keep into that, we keep running in where Sacramento takes away all the marbles and then says, oh, by the way, now it's your problem to make affordable housing. You know, it's your problem to make sustainable city. It's your problem to try to make net zero building, but we, we're not going to help you. In other words, those kinds of things are exactly the opposite things than what we need to do. The fact that.
We don't have consensus on this issue. It sounds like we ought to have a straw poll about whether or not we're going to take out the word eliminating. Out of fairness, I mean, you know, we've done things by consensus, so I want to name that. You know, Mario has the strong objection here and I want to honor it, so should we take a quick straw poll?
I'd say the reducing could include reducing to zero, but I don't want to write banner eliminating.
All right, well, who, let's, uh, let's say, let's say the straw poll, we can do it by, I don't know, can we do a straw poll by show of hands? Um, how many people?
One half mile in it, right?
We're within one half mile of, 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 of transit, but it, raise your hand if you would like to reduce, remove the words or eliminating. Raise your hands if you would like to keep the words or eliminating. Okay.
But can I, can I suggest it? I mean, look, if Mario's going to tell us he's going to give us consensus if we say reduce to zero, it's stronger consensus. But never mind, I don't see anybody reacting to that, so let's move on.
Um, can I ask a question?
Lisa?
What was it that you said that you wanted to, you wanted to eliminate the reference to a transit priority area, right? Which is a defined term under the government, or under the Public Resources Code? What did you want to change it to instead?
Within one half mile, which is the AD law and, and other state legislation. One half mile.
You know what, I'll give it to.
Actually provides it much more specific information about, I mean, it's here in the text. And it also includes places that, you know, for planned transit.
Right.
So do you prefer only exist?
Why doesn't, let, let's have somebody define what it means and maybe I don't need to do that.
Look at the footnote, it's right on your paper.
What is the footnote? Where is the footnote?
Oh, see, I'm looking. Page, see, I'm looking.
Someone just read it.
One at a time. Nina, where's the? 65.
Read it.
It says transit priority area means an area within one half mile of a major transit stop that is existing or planned. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
And Heidi.
I'm going to, yeah.
Heidi or Jim may know the answer to this because I can't remember. Does that include a, um, a high quality transit corridor? Because there's like one definition under state law that includes high quality transit corridors and there's one that's not. So I'm suggesting we go with the more expansive one, whatever.
Right, so I went to, here's the text of AB 1401, which is, they went through this in their process. Um, because they originally did make some references to high quality transit corridors and they eliminated them. Uh, it says, uh, the digest is one half mile walking distance of public transit. And that's the language, one half mile walking distance of public transit.
Okay, that's good.
Um, and I, and I would say, because we're talking about this and I want to be respectful also of, um, Mario's points that, um, that AB 1401 would not only allow governments to continue to require parking for car share vehicles, it would also, um, allow requirements for EV parking spaces as well as disabled parking spaces. And I think that's really important. We're not talking about the complete elimination of parking. We're talking about, there's still parking that would be allowed.
Why don't we just use 1401's language then?
One half mile, one half mile with, within, one, one half mile walking distance of public transit.
Right, right, right.
But are, do we also agree to use the language about EV parking and, um, state parking?
Well, that, that would come up when we, when we actually do the ordinance, we can do that.
Yeah. Okay, uh, anybody want to take a bite at the apple of looking for consensus and bringing Mario along with us somehow? Or Jim? Nothing gets a community riled up about like parking. Or was it Clark Kerr said about the University of California?
What'd he say?
Okay. Something like, he never has he seen so many faculty members reduced to something about parking. It was the, you know, the, and it's true, the, the biggest debates are about.
Parking, it says eliminating minimum parking. Doesn't say. I don't know.
Okay, let's keep going. So what is, uh, what is next? 1D? Uh, 1E, revise, okay, so this is Bergamot. Fix Bergamot.
Yeah, I'm, I have a very small change on this, a small but important change. Um, it reads, the city shall modify the design and development standards and guidelines in the PAT to establish more objective standards. I would like to eliminate the word more and for it to just say objective.
Yep. Nina?
Um, I would like to, uh, add that those objective standards would include standards, uh, liberal standards for, uh, live work artists, commercial living, uh, units, however you want to say it. And I did, I mean, it doesn't really belong in this document, but I did just make a note here that I'm just going to share with you for giggles about what I saw as the tenant of those kinds of places being fine art, a maker, a crafts person, an artisan, or a cottage industry even that has fewer than a certain number of people. So it's people who really need space to do what they do, but do it on a small scale.
Yeah.
So, as opposed to like a film company, I wouldn't, a film company is too big an operation for this.
Well, and it's not just small scale arts. I mean, it's small scale arts and manufacturing, right? I mean.
Right, that's why. cottage industry, right.
Should that go in the background section? Should there be a new paragraph on the background section?
That's a good idea, just to kind of describe that. I just hope that, you know, we can find a different way of providing housing by defining it this way.
Yes. Um, can I just say something in the name of the 394, uh, units of underground vehicle housing that some of us were required to approve when we did that kind of ridiculous project in Bergamot? Um, can we make a ref, I know we just covered parking in 1D, but I would like to make a clear reference to, um, reducing the parking requirements. Uh, the idea of putting all of that parking opposite the metro station was just.
Absolutely same.
For us.
Yes.
There was a tier, there was a tiered project.
It was.
I hope that project falls through so we can get Berkeley Street someday.
You're not, and I'm not, it's tier, tier, two words, you're not going to ever get it.
Any, everybody good with a reference to reducing parking requirements in, uh, reduced parking minimums after open space before the et cetera?
Yeah.
Good? Okay. All right, 1F. Anything?
Um, when we talk about the DCP and making the standards match, is there like a consensus out there that we want to either upzone so they can build 30% inclusionary or downzone? Or just change it to 20% like it used to be? Is there's one of those choices that people have in mind? Or I just can't find any concrete references?
I think staff is asking us to answer that very question. I was going to raise it if you hadn't. I think we're being asked to make a choice between those two options. And I think my sense is that we're being told that we won't get the housing that we need unless we revise the development standards to accord with our affordability standards and not the other way around.
Can I say something? Uh, I, I, I cannot go, um, without talking about the downtown inclusionary program. And I think it has absolutely nothing to do with development standards. It was unworkable from the beginning. After a year of its adoption, the city had committed to revisit it and revise it if necessary. And that was four years ago. And basically we have seen no projects built out to the full potential downtown using that program at all. Um, and I, so I think that, I mean, adjusting FAR and height to correspond to the inclusionary program downtown is insane. We're on top of 20 story buildings. The whole inclusionary program has got to be changed and it's going to be part of the AHPP process, period. Because it does not, it didn't, it's never worked.
So.
What?
Alyssa?
Um, for that very reason, I would like to specifically include, um, redline language in 1F and frankly in 1E that when they're revising the standards, that they, that it, I, I'd like to make a specific reference to the HRNA report.
The old one or the new one?
The new one, the feasibility one, the new one. I'd like to include that language in both 1E and 1F. Um, with regards to, um, looking at the standards.
It should also, it should also include tier three. It says tier two. If, if we don't look at it in terms of tier three, we might as well all go home.
That's right. So tier two and tier three, in, in 1F, it would be tier two and tier three project requirements.
Right, right.
Have we completely now eliminated housing VAs? Have we done that?
I think Bergamot's, does Bergamot still have that? I don't remember.
Jane, Heidi, do we know, do we have any housing VAs?
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, housing VAs?
DAs, develop, do we have development agreement?
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, no, we do not.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we only have, uh, DeJohn's, Ocean Avenue are the only two pending right now.
But the code does no longer contemplates development agreements for any housing type.
Uh, I think, I think the, the only place that that is still kind of in, in the standards is in Bergamot. Because of the tier and tier. Like, all, yeah, all, all tier three projects have to be, so to the extent there's a housing project that gets to that level, it's a development agreement. So that's the only area in the city where a housing project might be a DA. But we, we, we have not, no, no pending ones in that manner. And, and I mean, as you see in the program here, I think we were specifically directed by council to look at Bergamot, you know, for, to try and support more housing there. Um, you know, I think which would involve, um, I think as a, as an approach in general, you know, we're, we're trying to move it, trying to move away from, from DAs, um, if at all possible for, or particularly for housing projects.
So then could we include that in 1E? Could we, going back to 1E, could we include a specific reference to the elimination of housing development agreements?
Good idea.
I think that, let's remind council that they don't want them in Bergamot.
I was, Mario? We're required to have those by state law. That's always an option. We don't have to. But.
No, we're not.
Yeah, we are.
What? We don't, there's no state law.
You can always, no, no, you can always come in with the option of it. You can always offer a DA.
It's not mandatory, it's not mandatory, yeah.
No, 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 we can't, I'm saying we're requ, we would eliminate the DA requirement in, in Bergamot.
Right, no developer in his mind would voluntarily do that.
Well, yeah, I mean, otherwise, otherwise we become Beverly Hills where you build, you build buildings by initiative and referendum.
Or Carlos.
That's how we, that's how we kill buildings.
Right.
Can we? I think we just, you know, we, maybe the easiest thing in 1F is just take out the tier two reference. And we say consider feasibility of project requirement.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
John, I have another comment. John?
Yes, go ahead Leslie.
I think in the schedule, it says that the downtown inclusionary program, whatever we're going to call the future, will be done by December 2023. That is not acceptable.
No, downtown is by this year and Bergamot is by 23, which is also not acceptable.
I thought the downtown inclusion, no, the downtown inclusionary, I think is December 2023.
Yes, so. Sorry, hi, can, can I, that, that's.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead Jane.
It's, it's December 20, so what you see in the table is correct. What is in the text later on is not. So the, the, uh, 2023 date is, um, with Bergamot, because that talks, that's the reason I did this, because we're talking about like full scale, I mean, that's a very, very different plan altogether. Um, DCP is something that's, you know, we're tracking really this year, so that is December 31st, 2021, as you see in the table.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we go to 1G? Anybody for anything on 1G?
Excellent.
Yeah, it's excellent. A, Amy Anderson had a comment. I don't, but I don't think that, if I'm not mistaken, she didn't have, she was just giving examples, is that right?
Yeah, she just suggested really specific things that don't belong here.
Got it. Okay, well, we liked what she said though, so I just want to name that. Um, okay, 1H, I'm going to jump in with a comment on 1H to kick us off. Um, and I think I'm, I think Ellis would have said it if I didn't. Um, which is, this has to be for permanent housing. So the adaptive reuse of existing commercial tenant space for permanent residential use. Uh, at the moment, the business models for adaptive reuse of commercial are really focused on these sort of corporate housing temporary furnished deals. And, um, we do not want, that is not housing. As far as I'm concerned, that's logic.
Well, except for, except for downtown LA that has 3,000 adaptive.
Well, so, but there, but that's the point, it's permanent housing. They figured out how to do it for permanent housing. I don't want to, if the way this is written, somebody could come along with one of these new fangled startups and claim that they were providing housing. Also, I have some skepticism that the state of California, like, I don't fully trust the state of California to define housing the way we do, which is permanent housing for human beings.
Right, that, okay, we get it.
Well, and just to hammer away at my little seam of the evening, uh, what about something about, uh, because we have so many vacant storefronts after COVID and the loss of brick and mortar and all that kind of thing. Letting artists and artisans and small live work industries use some vacant storefronts, not on the promenade, maybe not even downtown, but in other parts of the city.
Why not on the promenade? I think that would be really awesome to walk down the promenade and see somebody doing something in their space. I mean, I don't know that anybody would want to live there, but I think it'd be awesome.
I, but we just need standards for it, so it's not really hard. And so people who are, you know, focused on making all that other stuff can figure out how to make these places home.
You also need substantial rent subsidies.
We, we had a letter, yeah. Right, we had a letter. Sorry, I just want to say, we had a letter from, I want to say Paula Larmour, asking what we meant by commercial tenant. And this goes to Nina's question, whether we're being, we're very clear that this has to do with both the retail spaces and the kind of office, offices upstairs. So, um, is there a language that would clarify that or are we happy with the the language? Mario, you've been working on this, so with adaptive reuse, do you have language?
Uh, well, it's, I think the issues are more, um, uh, how to deal with the open space issues. You know, there's some other constraints that, that commercial buildings have that if they're not tweaked correctly or given exceptions, that we might have a hard time accelerating the conversion, the adaptive reuse. So I think it's a finer grain thing that we can get into when we are writing more of the implementation ordinances. I think just the idea, I think, is good. Uh, actually, what I'd like to ask, uh, Actually, what I'd like to ask, uh, Jing and company is, how do we estimate the probability of that happening? So we can take some credit for it. Because as I understand it, we're not allowed to take credit for existing buildings. But this is not an existing building, this is a changed building. So how, how does that fit with the guidelines that, uh, the HCD is requiring us? You know, it's invaluable in meeting the RENA numbers? Or is it just like our homeless housing? Because providing, let's say kitchens and SROs, they count for nothing. They're just a cost of doing business for us.
Yeah, so, um, you know, what, what counts towards the RENA is a dwelling unit is defined in the census. And I think we previously, I don't have it in front of me right now, but essentially like a self-contained dwelling unit with living and sleeping, you know, quarters and, um, so if, if you created a new dwelling unit where there wasn't one before, it would count. Um, I think we talked about it in the context of, uh, adaptive reuse of residential or, you know, acquisition, we have this existing residential, that's a different thing. But if you're creating new units out of commercial space, that would count.
Okay.
Guys?
Um, I just need one clarification, Nina, on what you were saying about allowing artists and makers, um, to use retail space. Are you saying use it as a live workspace or just a workspace? As a live workspace? Thank you.
Okay. Um, are we ready for 1I? Okay. Uh, I really like this. Um, I am not sure. No, I'd like to, I don't know if this goes here. Um, and we've agenda, we're gonna, we'd like to agenda, I, you know, we want to bring the Moss Adams report before the planning commission for discussion later, I want to name that. Um, I really want to pick up on what some stuff that Mario was talking about. I, I don't, when we talk about the streamlined building permit review process, I, I would like to see stronger language, um, that also considers, you know, sort of an outcome A or B performance-based permitting process. Um, as I've shared, I went through one with some window and door replacements that I felt was backwards. Um, where it could have gotten, it could have gotten much more smoothly if I'd started with a Title 24 environmental budget for my doors and windows and then just simply filled in what I was allowed to do. Um, but it went backwards. So, and it took a very long time because of that. And I think we, that may be replicating in other ways across the city. So is there a way to strengthen this idea that we, we want to streamline the permit review process utilizing innovative construction methods and technologies? And also outcome oriented or performance oriented permitting standards or permitting benchmarks? Mario? Do you have thoughts there?
Mario, you're muted.
Sorry, the way, the way this is written, it's emphasizing technology and technical change, which is fine to encourage that. I think where we would come in from the planning side would be something, for instance, if we're doing all this to increase affordability, that's one thing. If we're doing it to increase sustainability and resilience, that's a different thing. Uh, but if we're going to go down that road, the sustainability road, and I believe we had it, that word was embedded in one of our policies that we took apart earlier in the meeting, then we would have to eventually get to either a solar access ordinance or a tree ordinance, a heat, heat, heat sink island effect. So those two things have not been spoken for yet. And there, and then, you know, it links to, and that links to the number of EV charging parking stations. Once you get that solar ordinance, you can go productively down that road. So the whole shift of the city using these little, let's call them technological levers, eventually bumps into the, the collision with the massive housing shading that we're doing for our whole city by going up so many floors and being forced to go up so many floors, actually. So I don't know if that belongs here or somewhere else in the document.
Is that a new program, actually? I mean, so is, is it a new program that's essentially modeled after this, ensure that local regulations support sustainability in construction to the extent technically feasible?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's part of that, you know, part of that sustainability, both in the building of the object or in the tearing down or adaptive use of the object, but then also running the object for the 75 years that it's going to be there, 100 years. So.
Yeah, and I'm saying if we're going to support adaptive reuse, then we also want to support, we want to make that easy to do. And so we want to support a permitting process that essentially rewards, prioritizes and rewards performance. Um, by which I mean sustainable, sustainable performance. So if you walk in, instead of, right, sort of looking at every single output, you walk in and you say, I'm going to be reducing my, my energy load by X percent. And I, here's the documentation for it. The city gets out of the way. The city says, great, you're, you're more efficient than you were. And go do your thing. Um, and we leave some flexibility to the, to the project, um, rather than, you know, so you're, you're focused on the performance of the project to the standards that we set.
Right, well, the city, the, uh, the state standards are actually quite good. Because what they do is they force you to reduce consumption. They force you to put those, you know, double glazed windows with the special film. I just double glazed, I shall, I mean, city film. There's a lot of things to reduce the energy of the building that we can do. Um, but eventually you get to a point where to keep going, you want to be able to put energy in. And that's where you bring in the sun or wind or geothermal. There's a couple of things you can do, but sun is going to be the preferred path. We haven't really addressed that here, and maybe this is not the place.
So I, in my notes, I have, um, so a new program, 1J, and the headline would be, ensure that local regulations support sustainable construction to the extent technically feasible. And then in the notes, I say part of this would involve 2 million projects that perform in a sustainable manner.
There you go.
Okay, that's good.
That's very good. Um, and I, you know, Jim had this point, I don't, what was it, like a year and a half ago? Where you were talking about the importance of shading relative to the importance of, right? That, you know, shade can provide a valuable energy, energy saving, um, function relative to solar producing energy. Uh, if you eliminate the.
Right, I was talking about the trees. An appropriately placed large tree could do a lot of, do a lot of good for a project.
Yeah. So we want to reward that. In other words, how do we, how do we have a policy that says if you put in a, if you put in a tree, you're going to, you know, we're going to, we're going to reward you for putting in a tree? Ellis, tell us, how do we do that?
Well, I mean, this is all part of what our updated tree code would, um, accomplish. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we're, we're kind of going at this backwards, but it does need to be integrated within the context of other, other planning priorities, other specific planning, um, objectives. And, and look, I think we're on the right track with the language that we're working out for this specific, uh, policy here. And I'll leave it at that.
I think, I think we're not on the right track. Actually, one of the.
Say again? Go ahead, Nina.
No, Heidi.
No, I, I was waiting until you were finished with this discussion. I, I would like to speak about something that happened, um, prior to. So I, I was, I was waiting until you were done with your discussion on this particular policy.
So are we adopting 1J?
I think we have, I think, I, I hear consensus.
Yeah, I do too. Are we all good with adding 1J? Can I suggest going back in 1I? Could we, could we say innovative, lower cost, efficient and sustainable conduct, construction techniques or environmentally sustainable? Could we put those, could we add that environmentally sustainable as a third?
No, I think separate policy.
You think it's a separate policy? Okay. Okay, Heidi?
Hold on, just quickly, uh, Christopher Fresco, he said we're not on the right track. Uh, sorry, I, I might have.
No, I was joking because Heidi showed up and I thought we were.
So, well, yeah, I mean, so I do, I do want to, you know, make sure that, you know, the policy 1J is, um, still within the confines of, of, you know, supporting housing production or housing stability. Um, so, so we will look at that. Um, but what I was popping in for is actually the specific reference to the HRNA report. And in programs 1E and 1F, um, I was looking at the language and it references the report dated as of March 26th. But I have a couple of concerns with how specific that is. The first is that the, um, draft, that was a draft at the time, it actually still is a draft at this moment. It's not complete. So I think that's a concern. The, the another concern is, is that it makes certain assumptions that council may change, um, from a policy perspective, um, once they review, um, the, the results that are presented to them. I.e., like for instance, it assumes a 10% very low income AHPP requirement. They may make, just, they may make a policy decision to alter that or to explore other options. But I would recommend, um, language that would be something more like supportable, um, or incentivizing housing minimums. I mean, um, development standards that support or incentivize housing as opposed to tying it to the specific results from this, um, from the feasibility study at this time, just because we, you know, council hasn't had a chance to weigh in on what policy direction it would like to go in.
Um, I, I totally hear you and I understand that concern. I, I still really think it's important that we, and I like referencing incentivizing housing minimums, but I, I really want to make an overt reference to feasibility in ENF because I think that's been an issue previously. Um, so do you have any objection to, we don't have to mention the exact report. If you have an issue with mentioning feasibility.
No, I, but as I mentioned before, I do think feasibility informs all of council's policy decisions. So they certainly are presented with that information in some form when they, um, when they make their determinations. So I think we can, we can look at some language and, um, bring it back to you at the, in a, in a moment at the end. For that, for those two.
Okay. Alyssa, what's the framing that you want? What's the, what's the point that you want to make by incorporating the reports by reference? In other words, is there a language we could come up with that doesn't have a date?
I, I think they, I think they understand it. The, the point is like we're on a repeat of the DCP, right? Where we adopt the standard that's not feasible and nothing.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Are we on to two?
I hope so. Are we on to two?
Uh, can we, I have two things to say. Um, can we?
Wait, are we on two?
Yes, we're on two.
Okay, 2A, go for it.
Wait a minute, can we take a break? And number two, can we go through 2A in the queue rather than everybody jumping in?
Yes, I think that's a good idea. Eight, do you want eight 20 or eight 25, folks?
Eight 20.
Eight 20.
Eight 20, stay at eight 20. Okay, we'll take a break.
Hey, Andreas and Karen, this is Mario. Uh, give me a call when you have a chance, 310-699-03.
All right. Like, we're about ready. Okay. I see we and Leslie's dresser are all here, so jump back in. We are on two A. You have Leslie yet? No. Here she is. Okay. So we're on two A. Citywide affordable housing overlay. We are going to go down the row and we will start with, um, let's start from the back of the alphabet. Let's start with Jim. Do you have anything you want to say about two A?
Hi, so, so sorry, Chair, I don't mean to interrupt. Um, can I just share language, uh, just so we can close out E, one E?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Uh, with respect to that, yeah, let me just, uh, share my screen. Oh, shoot. So that's, this is for one E and then we could also add it to one F. So, um, the city shall modify the design guidelines in the Bergamot area plan to establish objective standards and feasible development standards to support housing production. Does that work?
Objective design standards and feasible development standards?
Yeah, I can live with that.
Thank you.
Were we going to include also something about, uh, including special standards for, uh, live work and all that?
Oh, I thought that, that was already included in your changes, I believe.
Oh, I see.
I think there was a higher requirement.
That's right, that's right, yep.
Okay, never mind.
Okay. And are we saying objective design standards then? Not just, because objective standards and feasible development standards sounds a little weird.
Yeah, we're talking about, um, objective, yeah, because keep in mind in, in Bergamot, other than height and F A R, there are no, they are all flexible standards. So it's a revisiting of, of all of that.
So they're not just design standards, there are other standards?
There are, yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, let's head into two A. Jim?
I'll start with the E part, I think, which is in two A, it references A B seventeen sixty. Don't we just want to say density bonus? Because that gets updated all the time. So I would ask that we put that in there.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the policy objective. Marshall, I don't know that we're going to get it in the R one zones. And we're just creating a lot of, we're creating a li, a lightning rod of controversy on this. But at the same time, I don't really think I'm going to see four-story buildings popping up all over the R one zone for affordable. I'd be surprised if I saw one. So there's part of me that says we should just get rid of this because it's politically a landmark, but at the same time, it makes a powerful statement. I'm, I'm interested in hearing what other people say, but I do want to change if we leave it in there to go to state density bonus.
Okay, let's keep going. Alisa? No?
No, not Alice.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it's right, John, sorry.
Hard to do.
Fighting a migraine. No, I'm fighting a migraine, sorry. Yeah, I'll, I'll preface my, my comments by saying that, um, you know, we as a community have to, uh, really, uh, do the hard work of addressing our past, confronting our past and finding ways to, um, uh, affirmably further for housing as required to by the law. That said, I am not prepared to support this specific recommendation at this time because we don't have enough, I, 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 I don't think that there's enough specificity right now with respect to protecting renters and homeowners who are, uh, at risk of displacement. And, uh, for that matter, you know, we haven't seen, uh, the I R to know what the environmental impacts are on, with respect to population housing and other environmental impacts. Uh, I think that this is something that we should consider revisiting, uh, as we, uh, move forward, uh, in the future, but, um, I, I think we should, um, uh, focus on other targeted strategies, uh, for, uh, binding, uh, our, our affordable housing production through targeted, um, uh, rezonings, uh, and I, I, I'm not prepared to support this now.
I, that's a really good point, Alice, I hadn't thought about before with respect to this, um, and one that I agree with. I, um, I also agree with Jim in that, like, I think it's an important policy statement for us to make, but reality is that it's totally not feasible. And so I'm not sure it makes a lot of sense to create this like giant uproar in the community for something that's really just not feasible. And so if there's another way to get at this, I'd like to get at it, I'm just not exactly sure what it is. And I do, I mean, I did think this at the beginning of the process and people were saying to me, well, but this is what the A D U law already allows in some ways, right? You're already allowed to do reunions on a single-family lot anyway, um, which I think is the most likely thing to happen on this law. I thought, um, but I am also a little bit uncomfortable just not making some kind of statements. So I, I, I don't know where I land yet.
Leslie?
Well, I'm going to make some enemies with this. Um, I have, and I have attended a workshop on the Cambridge overlay district program and, program and, um, talked to a lot of people about it. Uh, I, I respect the intent, um, and I really, really admire Cambridge for doing what they did. They have an excellent ordinance, which this would not create. Um, and they did that through forty public hearings and they took two-thirds of the amendments suggested by the public. So if we were ever to proceed with this, we would need to do that in my opinion. There's, uh, the situation in my mind, the, the land prices north of Montana and somewhat in Sunset Park are not that much lower than the boulevards. So in order for this to be feasible, you would really have to aggregate two, three, four properties and build at the scale, close to the scale we see on the boulevards. And I think that is bad planning. I think it's bad design. Um, and I can imagine how, and it's frankly, it's not worth giving all that, the bloodshed we're going to see with our fellow community members. It's just not worth it. Um, even if this were to happen, I think it would be, um, as I said, really bad planning and bad design because it's not contextual. Um, and, uh, and so I oppose it. I oppose the low income part of it. I think seventeen sixty-three gets us near where we need to go. Um, the moderate, I, I, I would be willing to pursue, um, but I really think that basically a Navy seventeen sixty-three approach to moderate income housing, um, that we'd have to set a percentage of what that would, you couldn't do a hundred percent moderate income housing project because it wouldn't pencil because there's no public money to pay for it. So it would have to be a percentage of a project that is moderate income that would get the density bonuses under seventeen sixty-three. Uh, and I would look to staff and H R and A to look, to tell us what that feasible number is because I don't know it off the top of my head. Um, so I'm going to vote against the A H O D for the low income, um, and, and stay open to pursuing the modern.
Nina?
Um, I'm, I kind of agree more or less with what Leslie said. I don't, I think that if we're going to, uh, upzone our so many zones in order to make sure that housing is feasible, we're going to have enough height plus the state density bonus to provide for any affordable housing that would need it. And the idea of providing a similar density bonus for some kind of moderate affordable housing that's not covered by, uh, the state bonus is an interesting idea to me. But, uh, I just don't see why we need to poke holes in our loose like this to get where we're going. I think we'll end up, this whole city will get burned down instead.
Mario?
I agree with the substance of everybody's comments. Uh, I think it's a non-starter. I don't think we should waste any more time on it. I think anything that has unlimited height and density attached to it is dead on arrival. It's never going to fly. And, um, and the other thing is that, you, you know, part of this intent was to push development into non-traditional areas, however you define those. And when you look at, for instance, and I hate to say this, I know you're going to hate me for this, but if you look at A D Us on that map that we were shown, the A D Us are going exactly in the non-traditional area and they're going to get there much faster than anything we can do tweaking the R, R one to, you know, allowing, you know, upside down housing stuck underground, you know what I mean? It's never going to work. So we have a program that takes over the R ones with the A D U that's legit, and we also have good places to put substantial amounts of housing, specifically at the end of Ocean Park Boulevard, which traditionally was a giant airplane factory, on Main Street parking lots, which was traditionally a railroad and lumber yards. And, you know, we, we have the capability to distribute housing in non-traditional places without resorting to this very dangerous medicine here. I think we should just let it die a natural death and move on.
So the disadvantage of, um, going last is that everybody has said something you agree with. Um, I, I, I want to say two things that I don't think have been said, and I agree with everyone about where we land on this. I'm really actually interested in the production, uh, of the affordable housing that we're obliged to produce. I am not interested in labels. As exciting as the Cambridge model may be, um, I don't see the difference substantively between what they did there in their, with their legal framework in Massachusetts and what the state has done with, for lack of a better word, right? A B seven sixty-three, seventeen sixty-three and its successors, right? So one thing that has not yet been said is, I am, I don't think that, that the affordable housing overlay is going to work for the low income. We have to have a serious local implementation of the state density bonus law. We've been saying this for eighteen months. I, I don't know how else to say it. Let's just do that because that's what it is. It's an affordable housing overlay that already exists in state law. Arguably, we are already obliged to simply follow state law, uh, absent a local implementation, implementing ordinance, and we're way behind. The West Hollywood model looks great. It's a similarly small city. Let's just, we don't have to, like, let's not have the not invented here. Let's just take the West Hollywood model and incorporate it into Santa Monica and, and, and do that. It's, 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 it already makes sense within our, our region. I do think I'd like to see something for moderate income housing. I'm concerned that it will not pencil as Leslie is, but I would be willing to try. And so I, I don't want to get rid of the moderate rate, um, overlay, but I, I'd just like to see it, um, in the targeted areas as, as suggested. And the, the other thing is, and this, this will come up later in our, our one discussions, I, I don't, you know, when we were talking about the way that we zone, what Heidi kept coming back to us and Jane kept coming back to us and saying is it's not about the label, it's about what you're doing on the property. And I'm not interested in the label. Here, the overlay label is counterproductive. And later, I will, I'm going to say that the R one versus R two label is counterproductive. It's about what we can reasonably produce on the parcels that are available and feasible for development. So I am interested in, if we're, if we're going to have a conversation later on, I'm interested in what we can do on those parking lots on the north side of Montana. I want to have that conversation. But similarly, I think we need to have a conversation. It needs to be about the, what is actually feasible and not what has a, has a cool sounding name or sounds like, you know, we can, we can say all the right things if we don't do the, if we don't do the housing work, we're, we're still going to get nailed by H C D. So I'm also, no, no, so I'm, I'm, I'm with it, like, I think we are consensus to eliminate the, the affordable housing overlay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the consensus to delete the first paragraph essentially and keep the second paragraph.
I want to check on how people feel about the second paragraph.
Moderate income.
Yeah. Alice?
Um, I'm, I, uh, agree with, you know, what you're trying to accomplish here in, in principle, but for the reasons I articulated earlier, I'm not prepared to support it at this time.
That you're not prepared to support the second paragraph?
Correct.
Okay. Jim?
I'm supporting, I'll be supportive of the moderate income because it's, as I understand it, it's really focused around the transit stations, which is really consistent with my development desires. So I will, I will support that and I will agree that we should get rid of the first paragraph. And I also want to say thanks to staff for bringing it forth so that we could, as a community, could have this discussion. I know the council directed you to do this as well, so I don't want you to feel like you're getting thrown under the bus by us turning our back on this proposal. It's a discussion we had to have. We will continue to have these types of things. But.
Sit down.
I'd like to say, Mario, I, that's one of the reasons exactly I wanted to see that map. Um, so when you said you guys are going to hate me for saying this, I actually think that's exactly right. I think that was the reason we needed to see that map and see where those A D Us are being built.
And, and those A D Us are going to create enough controversy alone when they start popping up all over.
Yeah, they have a limited life. Before they can.
When you guys say that you support the second paragraph, does that include the unlimited height part?
No.
Okay, so.
What I was proposing, I was proposing an A B seventeen sixty-three approach, which is thirty-three feet and they don't address density.
Right. That's what I support you, but I don't like.
No, I don't either.
Okay, so can I try something here? Can I try something here, which is, Alice, would, um, would we earn your support for paragraph two if we were, um, explicit in opposing displacement? In other words, in other words, to the extent that these, that the parcels that would be selected for the moderate rate housing would not be parcels that have existing housing on them? Um.
Where's that?
I think we're, we're going to, this is something that needs to be examined in, in much further detail and I'm not, I'm not really prepared to do this on, on the fly like this. But, uh, thank you for, for trying to, uh, include me in this.
Okay. Why don't we take a straw poll, um, for the second paragraph, which would now read, "The city shall amend the zoning ordinance to establish a one-hundred percent affordable housing overlay for moderate income." Uh, I'd like, uh, do we want up to one-twenty or do we want up to one-hundred?
One-twenty, one-hundred.
Okay. One-twenty A M I housing projects in targeted areas of the city, such as the downtown area, Bergamot area and the immediate area around the Seventeenth Street Station, um, which is also known as Memorial Park, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, so let's say the Memorial Park area, because eventually we're going to get an area plan for Memorial Park. The moderate income affordable housing overlay would allow, uh, density bonus consistent with the A B seventeen sixteen, consistent with the state density bonus.
Well, no, it needs, no, it needs to be specific to seventeen sixty-three low income stuff, because that's different from the regular density bonus.
Well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't get, you wouldn't get the benefits of seventeen sixty-three with moderate, with, with a full moderate income project. So you do have to specify there.
Right, right.
That it's unlimited density and X amount of height.
Right.
Okay, so what's the, so let's restate, the moderate income affordable housing overlay would allow thirty-three additional feet of height.
Yes.
An unlimited density bonus and flexibility in unit size, unit mix in exchange for additional common area matters.
Right, and we don't know the percentage of moderate yet because we need to get a feasibility study. Right, and we don't know the percentage of moderate yet, cuz we need to get a feasibility study.
Correct, but it's a 100% affordable housing overlay, so...
Well, then, then moderate's gonna have to be called something different.
Okay, so then a affordable housing overlay.
So can...
A moderate housing overlay.
Housing overlay.
So if I can just provide background, we were contemplating this as a 100% moderate income project based on conversations. Yeah, based on conversations with people who actually do this work. And, you know, what's, what's necessary to try and achieve it. So that's, that's what this concedes. And I think to clarify, AB 1763, it's three stories or 33 feet. So I just wanna clarify that.
Well, actually, the people that I spoke to have said that 100% moderate income doesn't pencil.
Well, let's just stay with Jim for a second.
Okay, and, and, and then the, if I understand it, you're saying instead of the 50% density bonus, you would prefer that they, that moderate also get the, the unlimited bonus as the low income does as well?
Yes.
Yes. But I, I oppose saying 100% moderate, cuz I don't think it works.
Well, so what we've just said is a moderate income affordable housing overlay for up to 120% AMI housing projects.
Right, right.
So let's take a straw poll on this. I wanna acknowledge Ellis's discomfort and get that on the record and anybody else's. So if you are in favor of this paragraph, please raise your hand.
As amended?
As amended, right, as just amended. If you're opposed to this paragraph, and if you're opposed, okay? I was gonna offer you an abstention option, but let's find, so we're good.
I need clarification. Do you just plan on, for a moderate project, it have to be 100% moderate?
No.
No.
No, we just said a moderate, we just said a moderate, uh, a moderate income housing project, and we were defining moderate as up to 120 AMI. We were not specifying the minimum percentage.
Because we don't know.
We have to get the feasibility. There needs to be a feasible, a feasibly minimum standard, yeah.
But guys, when you limit it to 120% AMI, you've now made it moderate or less.
No, 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 no. It's not, that's the definition of moderate. That's not the max, it's not that it's 120 maximum for everybody. It's that we're defining moderate income as 120% of AMI.
No, it needs to be 81, it needs to be, it needs to be 81 to 120.
Okay.
I, I think I, I think I agree with what Sean just said to me in clarifying my comment, that you're, you're modifying, you're saying that moderate income is 120. You're not saying every unit in the, in the overlay has to be moderate. So that's an important distinction.
Yes.
I don't, okay. Thank you. I'm fine with it.
Okay, okay.
You're saying that there has to be a feasibility study to determine the minimum percentage necessary. Right, okay. Just so everybody, yeah, okay. We still all good?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just, just one more thing to clarify. The other thing that lower income projects get under state density bonus law is up to four incentives and concessions. You know, they're not given those under, so this would be added to the local ordinance.
Yes. Agreed, yes, thumbs up. The four concessions, okay, great. Okay, so to be or not to be, um, COPA, are we COPA-Setic? Yes? Thumbs up? Great, okay. 2C? Anything? Hang on. Okay, this is the AHPP revision.
I just wanna reiterate that this includes a downtown AHP that works.
Can I ask, we've had this conversation back and forth about 10% versus 15%. What is this desired base affordability percentage here?
10%, 15 is the typo.
15 is a typo, so...
Yeah, 10 is the current, okay.
So 2C should say 15%. 2C should say 10%.
2C, yeah, it was intended to, to base it off of what, what the current minimum is, which is 10%. I mean, if, if you wanted it to be open, we don't necessarily have to have one in there. Could just say desired base affordability percentage, you know, and then leave out the...
Earlier, Alisa had said something about 15%, so I wondered if you wanted to expand on that. You did, I thought.
No.
No? Okay.
But I do have a minor suggestion to the...
So go for it, yeah.
Um, I'd like to change the headline to read, "Upay the city's affordable housing production program and development standards to ensure housing projects are feasible." I would also like to add the language, I was gonna refer to the feasibility of the HRNA, but Heidi has convinced me that there is another way to do that, but also to also include that feasibility language in this, um, program.
Okay. Are those acceptable to everybody?
Yes.
Ellis? Go for it.
I'll say, yes, I just wanna note very quickly for the record, I have concerns regarding equity and fairness in respects to offsite, you know, placing all units offsite, but that's, that's a conversation for a different team.
Well, I mean, I'll take that one up, cuz we've gone through this a number of times. We frequently can get more housing on off, we can frequently get more housing offsite. And I wanna highlight that it says, "The affordable housing to be located anywhere in the city that is not a disadvantaged area." I think we, we are not talking about offsite affordable housing as in other regions where the affordable housing is literally shipped somewhere. We're talking about a matter of a block or two, you know, a few blocks away in most instances. So I think it's worth having that conversation because there has been some contention in the city.
Mario's guys hand up.
Yeah, Mario?
Uh, well, thank you for bringing that up, Ellis. Uh, and you have to realize, we're still a very small city. But if you move something, it's not like you're moving it to Siberia. It's still within...
Yeah.
Very, you can cross our city in 40 minutes, you know, it's that kind of a place. So it's not like it's leaving forever. That's the first thing. The other thing is, I'm rather uncomfortable with the concept of the inclusionary housing. Not that it can't produce housing, but I'm not sure that it can remain within the affordable bounds. If I have two or three units scattered here and there, it can be very easy for a landlord to cheat. I hate to say this, but that's what's gonna happen. Undo pressure's gonna be put on, option of tenants is gonna be shady, hard to enforce. Now, if you have a building that's 100% affordable, it's really easy to audit that building. You know, it's not like you have to go and find who, who's, who's got the Mercedes in the parking lot, you know? The whole building is, is one, one, under one, let's say, standard accounting format. And I think that makes enforceability and maintainability over time very, very good for our city. I mean, it's not a way of segregating people. It's a way of maintaining sustainability for a long time and affordability for a long time.
Sorry, can I just take a moment to respond to that? Just to provide some, some fact, some information about that. So regarding inclusionary units, the selection of the tenants actually comes from the city's below-market list. So landlords, you know, or whoever's owning that building doesn't just get to choose or make a list by themselves. It comes from the city's list. And then, and there's also annual monitoring, you know, in terms of compliance with those deed restrictions as long as they're in effect. So I just wanted to share that, that is, that is, you know, what is in effect in terms of procedures with respect to deed restricted inclusionary unit.
Leslie?
Um, I just wanna say, I'm a very strong advocate for offsite housing, for all the reasons Mario mentioned. For one thing, Jim, offsite housing, 100% offsite housing is run by a nonprofit that knows what it's doing with low-income housing. Um, and furthermore, they provide wraparound social services, which many people who are extremely low-income and very low-income need, and they do not get that in a mixed-income project. So I'm very supportive of offsite housing. There's one thing I would like to suggest and see how you feel. In, in terms of like avoiding impacted areas with offsite housing, I would like to carve out an exemption from that, exception from that in that if the acquisition of existing apartment buildings. Um, I mean, one way I see of stabilizing PICO is to acquire existing apartment buildings, deed restrict them for 55 years, and provide tenant constancy and affordable housing, et cetera. I think, and there's actually a bill in the legislature that hasn't passed yet that would allow us to count those units toward RENA. So I, I wanna, I would like to have that exception in not doing offsite in impacted areas specifically for the acquisition of existing rental housing.
It's AB 787. That would, uh, that would reduce, that would reduce the RENA obligation by the number of units that are converted to be restricted.
Bottom line is, they would, they would be eligible for being counted for RENA.
Correct. Um, so I, I see your hand, Ellis, I just wanna comment as well. I, I actually think that if there's a nuanced position here to take, which is that I think it's important to have income diverse communities in our, e, e, income diverse communities. I think there is an argument for inclusionary housing. I think there are also arguments for offsite affordable. Uh, but a number of years ago, we were seeing projects built with small numbers of extremely low-income housing, you know, one or two units per project. Um, and that really contributes to significant social isolation within the building, within the community. Yes, and, and, and Ellis, you know, one of the things that we were talking about yesterday, even Leslie brought this up, which is, you know, we're not talking about situations where the kids are going to different schools. All the kids are in the same schools. We're talking about the same, you know, social settings and socialization settings for families. Where I do think that Leslie has a point is when we're talking about these extremely low-income housing units that are really supportive housing units, that are really providing homes for people who need those wraparound services. But you're right, when it comes to working families, low-income families, you know, that, that is, that is somewhere where we need to be very careful not to be creating these separated communities. I'm not gonna call it segregation, cuz I don't believe that's what it is. But, um, so I, I think the, I will, I will make the case that this language is, um, is okay. I do think we wanna have a longer conversation about it. And frankly, I'm still hoping that we can get developers to produce moderate rate units, because we need them and we can't get them with tax credits. So the people who can afford to build them are the, are the private developers.
I just wanna...
Leslie, sorry, Ellis was next, then we'll go back to you.
Yeah, I didn't mean to lead us down the, the rabbit hole.
But wait, is it the inclusionary rabbit hole or is it an offsite rabbit hole?
Have you been to any fishing before?
I know, I know, and I, I, I do appreciate all, all of your, all of your points. And, and, you know, it's, it's just, you know, something that we should continue to, to, uh, this is a nuance that we should continue to appreciate moving forward. And we should, we should strive to the extent possible to ensure that there really is, is equity between the offsite apartments and, um, um, you know, what's actually being built. But I'll, I'll, yeah, thanks, thanks for indulging us.
Can we move on?
Leslie?
I feel very strongly about the carve-out for acquisition of existing buildings, because it stabilizes the community and that's really important. So there should be a carve-out.
So do we have consensus on my minor edits and then on the carve-out?
What?
Consensus on at least the minor edits and adding the carve-out for acquisition and conversion of existing units.
And, and whatever we're calling PICO.
I'm just gonna say that 55 years is too few. I, I think we need to be looking at...
Well, that's, that's a whole other issue.
I know, I'm just saying it out loud.
I hear you.
I suspect that Alisa has some thoughts about the updated density bonus to talk about some concessions.
Well, no, I mean, I just wanna add my, my language, basically, about, um... Uh, well, actually, I'd like, if, um, staff, can you bring up my edit?
Yep, just give us a moment here. I, I think I have the right one, so you'll have to let me know.
Okay. So, um...
Is it this one?
Uh, yeah, 2D.
Yep.
Yeah. There's my edit. I mean, I'm basically like, being specific about the floor area. Um, I believe this is based on West Hollywood. And then, um, saying that we need a voluntary ministerial process for concessions and waivers, and that we need to have a very specific by-rate menu that lays out those waivers and that they should be, that they should be included without limitation. One story, an additional one-story relief from the unit mix requirement, open space, yards, and other similar standards listed in the code. Um, and that in the meantime, we administratively process density bonus applications that are consistent with the current density bonus law.
So could we, I wanna ask, can we add something to this? I, I'm, would like to be specific also about the concessions that were referenced with ground floor height and, where is that? Yeah, we need that letter, that list of letters. Cuz they had a finite list that was really, maybe, is it Hank's letter or, um...
Paula?
Paula's, they're, they, they were very similar letters.
Yeah, mine was based a little bit on talking to Paula in her letter, but I tweaked it some. Um, I'm not sure, I, I gotta look at Hank's letter. But, I mean, I don't know that we need to get into the absolute weeds of this. If we can agree in concept, I think it provides staff with direction.
Right, but you missed some things, and I, and I, we, the, the, one of the major ones had to do with ground floor height, and Mario had brought it up earlier. Here it is.
Yeah, definitely.
Active commercial design standards, including the ground level sidewalk adjacency requirement and the ground floor minimum and maximum height standards. So I just wanna see what Mario has to say. He brought that up as well, so before we...
Sorry, for my notes, Mario, just sorry, one minute. Is that from Hank's letter or Paula's letter?
I'm, Hank had both, had three elements. Ahead of the floor, the relation of the floor to the sidewalk, and the ability to put residential on the ground floor. I think that's, that's a nice way. Not necessarily on the front of buildings, but on the side of buildings is very valuable, because that's when you're linking off into residential streets. So, so what I'm saying is, uh, those were, and they're not exclusive. There may be more things that we could use, more tools to get leverage on these problems. But those were sort of low-hanging fruit that he had raised, and that seemed like the logical thing for us to do. I'll give you an example. If you like the 32-foot height of our, most of our boulevards, then if you imagine you had an 11-foot ground floor or 12-foot ground floor, and then you could have, you know, another, you know, 10, 10 feet, and, and those would be nine-foot ceiling for your residential units above there. So now you're, you're at your 32 feet. So there's a lot of leverage on being able to insert more floors, which is really the secret, without necessarily more height.
Yep. So if we can list those, I think that would be helpful. I'll, I'll just say I disagree. Uh, wait, hang on. There's, no, never mind, that's not from this section, and we didn't cover it. So it's, there was a request to allow vehicular access from the residential side, and I don't agree with that. So, um, okay. Were other comments on this, Jim?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a good, is a good path forward. And, you know, listening to a guy like Hank, who's done a lot of these projects, is, is critical. But I would urge staff to go back and look at all the major modificate, or the minor modifications they've got, and if there's ones that come up all the time, to put this on a concession list. With that said, I will tell you that you can never anticipate every impact that a constraint will give you. So having a catch-all that says we can ask for a X percent reduction from any standard, I really, really think is important to include in this type of a, a bonus. But I'm very supportive of this process moving forward. And I'm gonna make one other plug on the height issue. This is not directly related to here, but we have another height issue, which is buildings over 50... over 55 feet, you get put into a high-rise in Santa Monica. That's not, not the same elsewhere, and that's a real problem because it really increases construction costs. So, you know, we do talk about modifying height standards, that's one we need to look at at some point.
Agreed. Is, where, where is it appropriate to raise that?
There was another program that talked about looking at height standards.
Um, I mean, I, I think we've shared this background with you before, and certainly the commission can recommend what it would like. But we did talk to the fire and building department about this. This is really about, this requirement was put in place post-Northridge earthquake, when there were a number of structural fires throughout the city. You know, mutual aid was activated, but really Santa Monica was on its own. And the fire department wasn't able to, you know, get to all of those structures. So this is really in place from a safety perspective. So, so we did talk to them about whether there's anything circumstances have changed that would allow us to revisit this, and, and they were not comfortable with that. So I just wanted to provide that background, that we did talk to them about it.
Wait, on the, but what, wait, but I remember that when we discussed this, we asked whether we could change, we could restrict that 55 floor, 55-foot transition to the seismic areas, and if we could go to 75 feet outside the seismic zone. Did you ask prior if they were okay with that?
We did, we did ask that. Rachel, do you recall? Because we, we did ask about, what about the seismic areas? And I think it's, it's a standards of cover issue, like sort of.
Correct.
Being able to get, it's not about just the seismic. It's like, if there's an earthquake in Santa Monica, it affects, you know, not just, it doesn't just stop in one area, it, it affects everywhere, so.
No, there's an attachment to the staff report that talks about that. Seismic safety.
Yeah. Do we want to talk about that? I mean.
Well, it's, they said that basically it's not an issue if you follow the building codes, the seismic codes.
Right, but it sounds like the fire department's uncomfortable with going above 55 feet, so.
Oh, you're talking about high-rise, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Jim?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's part of the International Building Code. You can go over that. And, and do fires burn differently elsewhere in the region? I mean, look, we're not going to, we're not going to win or, or change the mind tonight, but I just think this is something we need to talk about.
Is there consensus that we'd like the staff to continue to pursue a path to a higher definition of high-rise?
Yes.
I want to see, yes, yes, what, Alisa, yes, Mario?
No, I think, I think we're, we're in seismic hell here in San, San Antonio.
Okay.
I don't want to be caught.
Yeah, Alice?
I mean, I kind of, yes, with the caveat that, I mean, this is obviously just going to be constrained by whatever the fire department says, so, you know, you know.
Yeah. I'm in the same place, but if suddenly we, somebody invents like a fire retardant modular construction process that allows us to build high-rises for five bucks a foot that will never burn, uh, we should build them.
Fifty-five feet is not a high-rise, just for the.
No, it's, I agree with you.
And, you know.
Okay, yeah. All right, so where, so, so let's, let's stay where we, let's stay where we are.
So 2E.
Yep.
E?
E as in Ibiza.
Oh, oh, of course.
They don't have a lot of affordable housing in Ibiza.
If you live in most.
Wait, did we have consensus, folks, did we have consensus on 2D? Are we good with the revisions that we described? Yes? Okay, Alice, Mario, great, okay.
Well, I still think on that, I didn't hear any consensus on that, on having something that was.
A catch-all.
But I do think.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you need specificity, it's obviously a pathway for, for an applicant to propose an alternative concession to be considered by the zoning administrator, as opposed to being considered by the planning commission. Yes?
That works for me.
It's ministerial, isn't it? It's ministerial.
Well, no, because there's some, you, you're allowing them to propose something, and somebody has to actually read the proposal and have some thought about it.
So, under, under the program, right, as proposed, there would be this menu that if you walked in the door and asked for it, you would automate, it would be by right? And then the state law provides, provides for a process where you apply for an incentive or concession that gets, actually, under our current ordinance, would be reviewed by the director.
Oh, fine.
If it's not on the menu.
Great, okay, that's what I'm looking for. So just that it doesn't have to come to, you know, a board. Uh, okay, 2E, so that's consensus, yes, nodding, okay, good. 2E, but what do you think? Let's build affordable housing on city-owned and publicly-owned land, yes?
Yes.
Yes, I would say, absolutely yes. I think that we need to streamline our process, given the, what Parking Schedule 3 has been through. And I think if we're actually going to get these, these sites into production, we need to have a process that is faster.
Okay, Nina, then Mario.
Uh, I have to be a little Debbie Downer here, but I am a little concerned about those parking lots behind Main Street. And there's just so many of them, and, you know, we were just talking about inclusionary versus off-site. And this would be in an area where there would be a whole row of potentially seven-story buildings, like the projects, A. And B, it adds up to a lot of potential affordable housing units, but I'm pretty sure that there would be a big, dirty fight against it in the, well, I guess there couldn't be if it would just be by right. But the Ocean Park neighborhood would be pretty unhappy.
What, what do you mean, what do you mean by projects, Nina?
Just too much affordable housing all clustered together, like, you know.
You're talking like public housing?
Like public housing, thank you.
And that's bad?
Well, when it's all separated from everybody else and it's not mixed in with the rest of the community and all the different other housing types, it becomes worse.
But it's across the street from market-rate housing, it's from the beach, it's got restaurants, it's got a bus lot, like, I can't think of anywhere that's, you know, very few places that are more integrated.
Well, it wouldn't be integrated anymore economically to have that much of the same kind of thing. That's my opinion.
All right, Mario was next, all right, Mario was next.
I'm sensitive to that point, Nina. But if you think of a scale, what it is now, you've got basically one and two stories on Main Street, you might have four stories on the parking lots, and then you've got five stories on those big buildings, you know, that then will go even up to 12 stories for those big slabola things, you know? So there's a nice grad, grad gradient there that might not be bad. And it would allow a lot of relatively modest-income people to live by the beach. What, 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 what could be nicer, you know? And, and they could come down and, and, you know, we got, just the only problem is finding a place for the Sunday market. They could shop there, you know what I'm saying? There's some payoff there. There is one, great, I gotta say, there's one constraint, and that whole area is a high-water table. You can't just dig three floors down for parking. And, and because we have to maintain the parking, which is essential to Main Street, there's almost a built-in cap on how much can be built there. If you're, unless you're going to go down the road saying, we're not providing parking, good luck. But the point I'm making is that, there's, I think it's a, it's a nice sweet spot where we could do some real good for our city in that area.
So I want to say, I am concerned in the language of the second paragraph. I'm not convinced that we would want to sell the land. I'm not sure that we would want to encourage the city to sell that property. You can always do ground leases and air things. Would there be consensus about eliminating the recommendation to sell land?
No, because it's not, it's not our choice, city council's choice.
I don't understand. We're, we are suggesting it would be.
I mean, I don't really care, you could do a long-term lease, I don't really care, but.
Yeah, but I'd like to not be on record recommending that we sell city property.
I agree.
That's fine.
Say, sell or lease, this is a basic principle.
Yeah, right. Let them choose, it's their choice.
Yeah.
Well, why do we need to say this? What I'm saying is, why do we even need to reference the sale or the lease in the first place?
Why did you say, why did you say dispose of? Say dispose of.
So just to provide some background about this, is that the city-owned sites, they, they range quite greatly in size. There are some city-owned sites that are like 7,500 square feet, and this was just opening up the possibility that if you have a city-owned site, that maybe might be too small to develop on, you know, would it be, is it, it's not saying that we would, it's just that's consider, you know, the possibility, like, is it, you know, do you get more out of selling it, you know, or swapping it, or what have you, and consolidate a bigger site as opposed to saying that you can only develop it if, you know, if you might be able to get something better? That's, that's what it was meant to encompass. It wasn't meant to say that it costs us for everything.
Yeah.
Wait, I have a language, I have a language suggestion, may appropriate, may consider the most appropriate disposition of city properties.
That's good, fine.
Disposition sounds terrible. We're not giving away the, leasing the use of it, we're not disposing of it.
How about transfer?
No, that's my point, I don't want to say.
Dispose is consistent with the Surplus Land Act, and the Surplus Land Act has been, it is interpreted as sale or lease.
So disposition, the most appropriate disposition of, of, of city properties for the development of affordable housing. Uh, there was a hand somewhere. Leslie?
I, I have two points. One is, I mean, I, I witnessed the Main Street parking lot battle about 15 years ago, and it wasn't pretty. And I, I think somehow the use, the reuse of that parking lot needs to be tied to the economic recovery of Main Street. I mean, we know it's in trouble, COVID has made it worse, and I don't want to worsen it by developing a parking lot they need. So there has to be some nexus between Main Street's recovery and doing this. The second, I don't know, really, that's just a thought. Second thing is, I think this would be an ideal site for homeownership, for building some townhouses, where you wouldn't have to go underground for parking. I mean, I've settled for a long time, I think city land is ideal, probably the only option for affordable homeownership in Santa Monica. So I think that should be an option we'd consider.
Um, I'm going to add that if we're talking, I mean, we're talking about a lot of different sites. Obviously, the conversation seems to be focused on those parking lots, so I'll just say a couple of things. One is that those, the west end of those parking lots actually is not, it's not a sidewalk, right? It's, I don't, it's Nielsen Way, and there's no sidewalk on that side of the street, if I'm not mistaken. It's, it's, am I getting that wrong?
Yeah, well, what I was going to say is, basically, that area of Ocean Park has a, like, 150-year history of terrible planning based on, this is a really big, new, great idea. And, I mean, that's how we ended up in this mess in the first place, with that, I mean, it was like 150-foot wide right-of-way because giant egos were clashing in 1902. And I just feel like we're not holding it in a way that's knitting the community back together. I mean, those railroads, so I'm just really unhappy with, you know, this approach. I think it needs to be much more nuanced and subtle and neighborhood-sensitive so that we don't just continue doing terrible things.
I was going to try to get there with my.
Okay, bye.
Thank you. So number one, I think we have to remember that the inevitable kind of front or side porch of these projects doesn't currently have a sidewalk and it's a narrow street. Number two, that's where the tsunami zone is. So in addition to having a high-water table, there's actually kind of a limit on what you can do with respect to tsunami safety. God forbid there should be one, but, you know, legally, we have some constraints there. I think that we might want to suggest, to be very clear, that the, that this, each city site be designed in a way that has a range of housing diversity. I would even be open to moderate-rate, up to 100% affordable housing on those sites with a number of units. You could have maybe 10% of those units, or 15% of those units go, be 80 to 100%.
Why not 120?
We could go to 120. I was going to suggest that we be consistent with Prop R because we got to hit those numbers. And also that they be, to Nina's point, that they be varied, right? That we not do cookie-cutter design on five lots in a row, and that when we, when we look at the city sites, we build them in ways that maximize housing, but also maximize the housing and open space and community development potential of those sites. And that we, and that we have processes for developing those. Alice?
Yes, real quick, I hope we can all agree to add maybe some language that says that the process of developing city housing, housing on city-owned sites should involve community stakeholders. And, you know, this applies also to, you know, the artists of Bergamo too, so, yeah, let's say something to that effect.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking also in terms of, like, what a healthy community is. A healthy community has a range of housing types, it has housing and open space together, it has housing and community functions together. We are not envisioning, you know, a stack of, I'm thinking Vienna, right? Like, I'm thinking Vienna social housing model. I'm not thinking, I'm not thinking about like boxes for, you know, warehousing people. I don't think any of us has that in mind. And I, I wouldn't want the public to have that impression. So, Alice, would you, could we have language that says that this, you know, to guide develop, where, let's see, guide development through a public process, including community stakeholders, to maximize the production of affordable housing, you know, alongside, in a healthy, in a healthy environment, or in a healthy and sustainable environment? Yes? Anybody else? I see, yep, good, okay. All right, I don't see objections. Can we go to 2F?
Can we move, can we keep moving?
I just said, can we go to 2F?
Um, just so you know, I'm not totally comfortable with all that.
Oh, so you want to vote on this? We, let's do a straw poll.
Um, I mean, in general, I am in support of all of these things, but I do have that one reservation, so I don't know how you put that on the record.
Well, let me ask you directly, because it could come up, it could come up at council, where do you put that housing? If you don't put it on those lots, we, the staff has told us how many units of housing we can expect to get from the city lots. If we take the main parking lot off the table.
I don't have, I'm in my discomfort. I think it's going to be better, but I just can't quite get there today. So that's, that.
Nina, are you comfortable with your oral, with what you have said on the record, or would you like a straw poll?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Are you comfortable, are you comfortable with your objections on the record, or would you like to have a straw poll?
I guess that we can just have a straw poll. I mean, my objections are on the record, so.
Yeah, I, I think we're on the record, I don't think we need a straw poll, but I.
Okay, fine, it's fine.
Let's, no, let's, let's do it, let's, let's, we, let's do the straw poll. So we've, we've agreed to an amendment of the, of the back end of the first paragraph, which talks about a public process, including engagement of community stakeholders to maximize the production of affordable housing in a healthy and sustainable environment. And then in the second paragraph, we are saying, in some cases, may consider the most appropriate disposition of city properties for the development of affordable housing. So if you're in favor of that, that language, just a thumbs up. Yes? And if you're opposed? Okay, Nina's sort of opposed.
Sort of opposed, I mean, it's just one site I have discomfort with, but yeah.
Would you like to abstain?
I'll abstain.
Great.
Thank you.
You'll abstain.
It's good to have a lawyer in the house.
2F, we've got, Alisa and I planned this whole tag team thing in advance. Uh, she's keeping me honest. Uh, 2F, any comments on 2F?
Oh.
None?
Yeah, I had one thing, you know, what, my whole arts housing deal. Um, yeah, I had one thing, you know, what my whole arts housing deal is that, uh, I wanted to mention something here about, you know, a complete alternative that's not, uh, that to explore an alternative that, I mean, the idea I had, I don't know how you fit it in here, it doesn't have to be this specific, but I was thinking, we have an arts community, the people at Bergamot, uh, there's people still, uh, on the other side of Ocean Park Boulevard in Rusherville, and, you know, uh, to maybe activate them and make them into their own nonprofit that could then receive funding, or that the city could assist or explore that with that, I don't know. But it could be a whole different way to get funding that doesn't also use tax credits so that there's more. Do you see what I'm saying?
Let me suggest two things that we might accomplish this and see if we can get through it fast. So new sources of state, federal, and private philanthropic funding, or philanthropic funding, without the word private, new sources of state, federal, and philanthropic funding in the first paragraph, and in the second paragraph, you would say, including special needs and arts housing.
Okay. I love it.
Is that good for everybody?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, let's go to two G. Anything? Alice?
Just, uh, very quickly, would we all be comfortable, uh, deleting the clause, uh, that references the baby boomers? So that, uh, that sentence will just say, the city shall consider uh, the need for more congregate housing and residential care facilities? I, I don't feel.
Okay, Exor.
Hey, wait, what you're talking about? I don't want to be eliminated.
Wait, Alice, will you say, Alice, can you say that again, please? What did you want to eliminate? Just. The reference to baby boomers.
Yeah, so just the sentence will just say, the city shall consider uh, the need for more congregate housing and residential care facilities.
Yeah, no, I would suggest that the city shall consider a preference for aging in place along with the need.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. I, I think it's important to keep that because we want to keep people in their homes.
Yeah, I agree with that. I don't know.
To the extent they want to stay there, yeah.
Yeah, it gave the.
I don't want to have.
Singling out, uh, one generation.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Keep going.
Okay, maintain proposition eye-monitoring, yeah. Okay, low-rent housing projects, okay. Um, are we done with goal two? Can we go to goal three?
Yes. Keep going. Don't stop.
Three A. I think we covered three A. Let's keep going, because we were all, yep. Got me, three B. Uh, three, uh, sorry, on three B, do we want to add a reference to Leslie's, uh, point that she made earlier about, um, uh, you know, looking to get, uh, conversion counted toward the arena?
That's, that's not my, that's not up to us. Um, oh, but.
No, but this is a state and federal, this is a state, this includes sort of, oh, no, you're right, that's programs, not advocacy. Sorry, moving on. Three C? Mario? That's a thumbs up. Three D? I'm gonna keep reading until somebody yells out and stops me. Three D, three E, three F, three G, three H. Uh, I'm gonna ask a question about three F. Um, we have maintain. Um, there has been some desire to prioritize it.
Just change it.
Do we want to strengthen? Do we want to strengthen three F?
Put in the word, keep going. Put priority in there, keep going.
Okay, so prioritize code enforcement response to housing-related violations. The city shall maximize its response to residential building code violations. Yes?
Yes.
Great. Three H, four A.
Um, hold on.
Alisa? Alisa?
Sorry, never mind. False alarm.
Uh.
Uh, four A is the, um, you know, the destruction of the R-one zones. I don't think it's needed. I don't think it's desirable.
What?
No, no, that's different. Mario's.
No, it's not. No, it's not. It's four A is housing, housing on commercial.
No, it's.
Four A is housing wherever it's prohibited.
O-C-I-C and C-C.
I have a question. Wait a minute.
Leslie?
Mario could be right, because it's saying multi-unit housing in all zones.
All zones. Doesn't that include?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, he is right. You're right.
Right, you're right. No, it's unclear. It's not all zones. It's in zones where housing is prohibited.
Great, there's an easy fix here, people.
Go for it.
Well, why would we want to go with the easy fix when we can talk about it for twenty minutes?
That's right.
Just amended to add multi-housing as permitted in non-residential zones where it is currently prohibited.
Yes, and, um, the word it, uh, third line, fourth line from the bottom should be, should be changed to housing. Land use regulation shall be amended to add multi-unit housing as permitted use in areas where housing is currently prohibited.
Can I say something? Hello?
Yes, Leslie. Yep, go for it.
I want to make sure that we incorporate the five hundred feet from, um, the freeway. Ever. Um, and I also, I mean, this is really, some of these zones do not further fair housing and equitable access. I mean, we're putting people farther away from housing than they've ever been before. Um, but just, that's just an aside.
Well, you lost my vote on that, if you include.
What? On what?
The five hundred foot. I think it's site by site, and I think there's design constraints around it. It's not ideal, it's not the place I want it to be, but I think we need to keep all of our options on the table. And it's, it's like, this is a problem with our transportation system, and we're letting it impact our housing. Um, so I, I just don't, I don't agree with that. Again, I don't prior, want to prioritize it, but I don't want to take it off the table either.
What about, what about children, what about children playing outside fifty feet from the freeway?
I'm not talking about children playing outside in fifty feet from the freeway. Talking about housing within five hundred feet of a freeway. I don't want children to play on the freeway either. All right, listen, I can go, I'll, I'm not, I, I sense I'm a lone voice. So let's not spend a lot of time on it.
Okay, all right, okay.
Well. Alice?
I, I just need to state for the record that, uh, I'm, I am not taking any position whatsoever with respect to item four A. Though remember, I recused myself from a discussion about this earlier this year, uh, and for the same reasons, I'm not taking any position on, um, on this, on this, uh, particular subtopic.
Okay, we will make sure the record.
Add a sentence that says, um, something like, you know, care will be taken to consider this on a case-by-case basis. So I think that sort of incorporates both Leslie and Jim's concerns, right? That there are some places with, that you're within five hundred feet of a major road, and it might be appropriate, and in some cases, it may not be. It definitely may not be. So perhaps, and also takes into consideration what Leslie said earlier.
Can, can you just clarify, are you talking about five hundred feet from the freeway throughout the entire city, or is it just?
No, just the, the IC zone.
In the IC zone, okay.
Yeah. I, I would, I would like to make sure that when we talk about care, we are also concerned about equity, because my concern, and, and this is a trade-off, I just want us to go in with our eyes open, there would be a tendency to put certain kinds of housing in those industrial areas. And I am not sure that we want to warehouse people in those industrial areas.
Right.
On the other hand.
Let me, let me, let me clarify one thing. The bulk of this so-called industrial area is wrapped around Imperial Park, and it has a major transit node there. So it's not like we're, we're, we're creating this huge problem here. We're actually doing what we should be doing, which is aggregating housing in areas where transit is easy. So, and the fact that we're providing some additional buffer of safety, I think so. We're not saying you can't build in that area, we're just saying, don't necessarily build housing in that area. There's still gonna be some industry in our city. I hope there's gonna be some.
Yeah.
Over time, let's be honest, the industry has been slowly replaced by service economy, which then has been now being replaced by housing, and that's, that's, that a measure of how desirable a community we are. So it's not like we're, you know, basically selling grandmother's jewels here. This is a, a very measured thing we're doing.
So why don't we simply add a sentence, attention shall be paid to environmental, uh, to environmental and fair housing considerations?
Works. That works.
No, work. Work. Leslie, can you live with that?
Yeah, I, I don't care. I mean, I, I believe in the five hundred feet, but if nobody else does, then I'll try with everybody else.
Okay, so then we'll do five, attention shall be paid to environmental and fair housing considerations. As the last sentence. Okay. Four B?
Um.
Yes. Oh.
Yes.
Uh, I, I'd like to have language again about feasibility.
Yes?
Um, the one thing that scares me was something in, uh, Ken Kutcher's letter about how the loose changes will, uh, require a supermajority of council to change. And, uh, so I want to just remind staff to, uh, you know, just really talk about in the staff report what it will take to do this. And, um, make sure that people buy into it before we send this off to Sacramento and then not be able to do it. So that we could make other arrangements, whatever that would be.
Well, the alternative is that we end up with a decertified housing element and.
Right. I don't want, I just want to make sure that everyone in the community is really, really eyes wide open that we meet that, of what we have to do.
Okay. Four C? So we have consensus on a, Alisa, where do you want to add feasible minimums? Um, I don't, where's the feasibility? To support the the feasible production of affordable housing?
No, I take it back.
No, you don't, we don't need feasible.
I mean, I guess at the end of the last sentence, based on feasibility analysis.
Fine, yeah.
You could also say to promote, um, fair and equitable distribution of new housing opportunities across the city, feasible develop, development standards be amended to feasible, you know, um, height and FAR to incentivize housing production.
Yeah, that works. I'm just, I mean, I know, add feasibility language.
Yep, that's great. Thank you, Heidi. Ocean Park, uh, the office campus zone is the, is the, um, business park, right?
Right.
All those parking lots? Okay, cool. Um, and now on to other parking lots, on four C. I hope everybody's behind this one?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Alice?
Yeah, I'm behind this. Um, I, I wonder if we'd all be supportive of adding, uh, a sentence that says something, uh, to the to the effect of, uh, you know, if, if members of such congregations are, um, of families that have historically been displaced from Santa Monica, that they should be given priority for that housing.
I think you open the door to religious discrimination if you do that, and I say that as someone who is very committed to getting this forward. Um, so I think you want to be careful about that.
Yeah, fair point. Um.
Well, you can always say, to the extent permitted by federal fair housing law.
Yeah.
Or just say law.
Yes.
Just say law.
Right, uh, you can't permit it by law.
Right. I would say affiliates of the congregation, so that there may be, you know, I think you could have a situation where you have someone who works for the congregation. You have someone who, it doesn't just have to be someone who's a formal member. They could be an affiliate, they could be, they could be an employee, they could be community stakeholder willing to self-identify. Yeah. Do we have consensus there?
So, so sorry, though, so you're saying that to the extent that they are a, a member of a historically, um, displaced population, they'll get priority? Is that what you're saying?
You can't do that. Can't do that.
That's, that's why we're saying to the extent.
We have a whole, we have a whole set of priorities in Santa Monica.
We can give them points. You could say, to the extent permitted by, by fair housing law, affiliates of the, affiliate, affiliates of the producer, I don't know what you would call it.
I'm trying to figure out what Alice had in mind. Can we start with that?
Well, look, you know, there, there are congregations here in Santa Monica that, um, you know, have, uh, uh, you know, uh, members who historically, um, come from families that have been displaced from Santa Monica. And, uh, so, you know, however we can do it legally to find a way to give priority to the housing that's adjacent to that congregation, I think that'd be great, but, um, um, you know, again, we're constrained by the law.
You just remember that Alice displacedes get first priority in Santa Monica. Santa Monica, Santa Monica residents get second priority, so you're talking about third priority.
But this is the same thing as, this is Kevin McKeown's.
I know that, I know that, Sean. I know, but I assume that he was respecting the priority system of the city when he said that.
He was, and there's a, the system is to give people points. So you get Alice points, you get Santa Monica residency points, you would get points for being an affiliate of the, as an applicant. The problem, but, but wait, Alice, seriously, the problem, I, I like the suggestion. What it brings up for me, however, is that we recently went through a, you know, an issue where the affordable housing that was being produced by private developers was under control of the private developer, and, um, we moved to a system where there was a city-owned list. And I think we would want to avoid any moving back toward any suggestion that the private developer has control over the affordable housing list. I think, I think it just opens.
That's not what this does.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, if you cannot limit to fair housing laws, because there are other laws that come into play, so to the extent you have, it should just be, to the extent permitted by law. And I would suggest that rather than saying priority shall be given, I might just want to say increased priority to make clear that they're not gonna get first priority. They may just get an increase in priority.
There you go.
Right, very good.
Great. Increased priority to affiliates of those congregations who are, who whose families have been displaced, or Alice, how do you want to finish the sentence?
I, I don't know what the magic language is, but, um, you know, families that have, uh, uh, you know, been, historically been displaced, I, I know that there was some language that was being tossed around by staff before. Um, I'll defer to whatever, whatever works best.
What do you mean by?
In New York, in New York, the language.
Specific descendants of people who were displaced?
Yes.
That's.
That's where I said it.
Okay.
In, in New York, the, 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 um, the preference at Essex Crossing is to people who can trace a direct line, they're, they're, they are direct descendants of people who've been displaced. Yep, okay. We're good?
That's a really good, that's a really good one, Alice.
Um, can we do a Q with four D?
Uh, we sure can do a Q with four D, and we'll start with Commissioner Fondabinardi, because we started with Commissioner Reese on the last Q.
Uh, again, uh, not necessary, will not achieve goals. Uh, politically, very unpopular. I'll need to remind you, and I'm sure you've read them all, that two hundred and twenty of our residents wrote into us specifically against this idea. And again, I don't think it furthers affordability, it furthers the diversity. And we can get there by other means. In addition, we might be preempted by uh, proposition S, SB nine, or, yes, SB nine. So we don't need to stick that knife in our own back. I think we should let the R-one zones be the R-one zones. And finally, they do provide a great number of the trees in our city producing our helium effect. So they're doing a lot of good stuff for us, and, uh, we don't need to mask with something that's not broken.
Commissioner Fresco?
Well, I feel the opposite way.
Well, I feel the opposite way. Um, I feel like, um, this has a, to do with a much bigger thing. If you can imagine something bigger than providing affordable housing. Um, it has to do with learning about privilege and how it affects each and every one of us for ourselves. And understanding what tools of segregation and, uh, racism linger in our codes so that we, they end up having negative effects on our community in other ways. I would, I don't know anyone in Santa Monica who's racist, but we definitely have a very classist society. And, uh, I believe that, I know I've spent, you know, the last year researching this and have done a lot of personal soul searching as a result of my research. And really had kind of an epiphany in it, a personal change that I hope we can inspire other people to pursue. Um, and I just really believe that maintaining a law that says that people of privilege have a right to have a property all to themselves, when they don't need that law, they can have that property all to themselves because they're wealthy and they're privileged. I just don't think it belongs in our laws. So I come from a very different place than, uh, you know, just code. So we've talked about, you know, staff proposed of a very modest change of three units and, uh, it's, you know, honestly, I don't even think it's that likely to have that much of an effect, but I think we have to get used to the idea that our laws aren't going to, shouldn't be protecting our privilege. I think we need to start separating from those things. So I know it's very esoteric for a housing element, but I just feel like it's critically important at this time in the world to, uh, start, you know, making really big moves on that. So that's where I'm coming from. In terms of how we implement it, I mean, we already can, because of the ADU laws, add different kinds of units. And maybe if we even made it two units, uh, it would still break it up. It would give people more rights than they did before. It would make it eligible for uh, imaginary affordable housing units that wouldn't ever be able to buy. I mean, I just read an article, it's the third most expensive zip code in the entire country. I mean, so I just really feel this is important. And, uh, we just have to go there. So that's my spiel.
Commissioner Fetter?
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
I have a few more things. I'm sorry. So people are very, I think that it's really important that we honor the R1 standards, that we just went through a huge community process. And that's also, you know, the three-unit thing becomes less viable, but the two-unit thing still allows more flexibility. I think that the long-term owners, the ones who say, we invested a long time ago in this property and we could never even afford to buy it now, those are the people who will make the most money off of this deal. Um, and I think that obviously properties with, uh, that are, contain historic resources, we have tools to protect them. Uh, and, uh, I hope that, uh, people will start to use those tools voluntarily more to, as a way to establish historic districts and landmarks in order to protect those kinds of buildings. Um, I also wanted to note that I toured through the neighborhood this afternoon and a lot of those new buildings, the new homes in that district, they already look like condos. And, uh, so I just don't see it really changing much, except that we're changing the tone of our laws. Okay, now I'm good for now.
Agreed.
Thank you, Nina. I totally respect your position. I don't agree with it, but I respect it. Um, this has been a very difficult decision. I'm, I guess I'm one of those white, privileged, R1 homeowners, uh, who could never afford to buy my house today. Um, and I, I, I've given this a lot of thought. And, and if I thought for a minute that building two or three units in R1 would actually increase access or in any way affect affordability, I'd probably favor it. But our feasibility studies have shown that it doesn't. That number one, it won't work, so it would be simple work. We're talking about condos that are a million and a half or $2 million, where 95% of the population couldn't afford, 5% of the population couldn't afford them, whatever race or ethnicity they may be. So it's, it's not, in my opinion, it's not a realistic, open access, affordable housing approach. Um, and, and it's not worth the bloodshed that it would ensue if we did it. Um, I also want to talk about the neighborhoods we're talking about. Where we focus on, for one thing, R1 in Santa Monica is 35% of the residential land. In Los Angeles, it's 75%. So we have a very different geography in terms of housing type here. In the case of Wilmont, it's really, in my opinion, it's part of a bigger community. And it's really north of Wiltshire. And it includes northeast. And when you, because those people all go to the same schools, they shop in the same places, they walk along the same streets. In my opinion, that's an integrated neighborhood. Let's talk about, about North of Wiltshire rental. 38% of the rent-controlled units in Santa Monica are located north of Wiltshire. That's a lot. There are like 10,000 rental units. And those rental units, the maximum allowed rent is affordable to a family making $100,000 a year, which is a little above moderate, but not much. So that is where our middle, missing middle housing is. More than half the units in North of Wiltshire are affordable to people making $100,000 a year. That's important to remember. And those people's kids go to the same schools that North of Montana and Northeast neighbor's kids go to. So in my opinion, that is a social integration. And, and I think that neighborhoods we look at as a more holistic, um, um, neighborhood. And in Sunset Park is even more extreme. Uh, there, there are many, many, many more multifamily units in Sunset Park than there are single family. And all of us, my, or my daughter went to Little Rogers, all of us go to the same schools. And so these kids are integrated on a daily basis in the schools. Um, and again, I, I figure if, if, if it were at all feasible to make this two or three unit development work, which I don't believe it is for a minute, it won't happen, so it's symbolic, uh, we wouldn't have 4,000 single-family homes in Santa Monica currently on R2 properties. If that was a viable way to do something with your property, those 4,000 single-family homes wouldn't be sitting on R2 properties. They'd be three-unit condos. So I, I really don't think that it's a workable program. I think it's symbolic and I think frankly, HCD is going to be smart enough to figure that out. Uh, particularly as I look at our feasibility studies. So that's all, I'm, I'm voting against this. Um, I, 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 I don't think it's, it's not workable. It's symbolic. It doesn't open access to people who could afford to buy here of any race or ethnicity because it's so expensive. And so that's where I stand on it. And what few friends I have left after voting against the overlay district are probably going to be gone after this. So, um, so that's, that's my position.
All right, Commissioner Pastor?
Um, I mean, my problem is I sort of fundamentally agree with both its view. Um, and I have, I'm having a hard time responding to that. And so, and I'm not going to repeat the very emotional and persuasive, um, speech that Nina gave and Leslie's rationale of, you know, practicality. Um, so I have a really, really hard time with this because I think symbols are important and I think it's important for us to send a message. And I think it's important for us to walk the, walk, walk the talk or whatever the saying is. But I also can see that it's going to create great. Um, and I fundamentally sort of just hate this, ultimately sort of just hate this whole like, I think the idea that you couldn't have, the thing that is in some ways the most offensive to me is like, that you couldn't have two or three units in, that it would somehow ruin a neighborhood. And that somehow more people ruin a neighborhood. And I just find that really offensive. Um, and that, so that's to me the biggest issue. I guess in some ways I'd like to see the policy or the program revised to, I don't know, I mean, this is so wishy-washy, but to sort of do a deeper dive into where certain zone changes might be appropriate and feasible. And somehow express that like, this is an important issue. And it is, and the symbol is important. So I, I don't have a great solution, but that's right now.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, no one denies that our zoning is the product of a racist past. And I, I really appreciate the comments that Commissioner Fresco has, has raised here. Um, all, all that being said, um, I'm, I'm not prepared to support this at this time. Uh, I, I don't think that this is going to make a meaningful contribution numerically to where we need to get to. Um, and for that matter, the demographic in our city that is the single greatest risk of displacement are working-class families who rent single-family homes. I don't think that there's been enough analysis, uh, as to how we're going to address, uh, that serious concern. And, uh, to Commissioner Fondabinardi's point, you know, we haven't seen, uh, the environmental impacts of this yet. We don't know how this is going to impact the loss of our pre-canopy. Um, and, um, for those reasons, I'm not prepared to support this tonight.
All right, Commissioner Reese. Jim?
Um, all very good comments by everybody. Appreciate them. Uh, I am struggling with this because I do think that it's an important symbolic discussion. Um, but I don't know that it's thought out well enough at this point. I think this is something that really would take a lot of time and study. And getting back to what Elisa said, you know, maybe the program is to consider, consider the changing of R1 zoning appropriately located R1 zones. Because I don't think this is really that appropriately located. I'm not a big fan of putting the density further away from jobs, transit, things like that. And this, I think, kind of does that. With that said, and kind of in response to a couple of things I heard, you know, I agree, there's a lot of trees there. And I remember one of my commissioners, um, in my first term saying, we're, we're the lungs of the, we're the lungs of the city. It's hard to disagree with that. But that's also the area that uses the most resources per, per capita. There's the fewest people living there and they're the biggest homes. They use the most water, the most energy. They got to drive everywhere they go. So at some point, I think there's a really important education process that could come through further study. You know, nobody really understands what Nina's research has shown. Um, and having a, a community discussion about that, I think would raise awareness and talk about some of these other equity issues and environmental issues. So I would really propose that we look at it as a program in the future to, as a program to study this further. Yeah, I have more to say, but that's really where I'm at right now. I'm not prepared to vote for this today. Uh, look, I couldn't even, on my first commission, we couldn't even get the city to commit to activity centers or development at tier three along corridors. And now all of a sudden, we're going to go and try to blow up the R1 zone. Uh, this needs a lot more work. And, and there's good reason to have those studies. So I, I really suggest we have a, a policy or a new policy to study that. That's all I have.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, so, so I, I want to say a couple of things. Um, from a purely moral perspective, looking at history and looking at what is right, um, my heart is with Commissioner Fresco. I think it's really, really, really clear that, um, the history here is problematic. And, and I will remind everybody that it's personal to my family. Um, I grew up in a home, my parents were the first open Jews on the block and it wasn't, um, you know, it, the covenant's, the covenant's terrible. Uh, and I think that's not okay. Um, so, um, that, that's a, that's a problem. Um, so I think that, um, the, the challenge is the reality that we live in. And I'm, I'm really sensitive to what we do as opposed to what we say. And I do not support, um, throwing labels on things just to make ourselves feel like we've moved the needle on a historic, historical moral failing. It's, I'm, I'm much closer to where Jim is in terms of, we need to have these conversations in our community. Though I want to be more specific. I would not support the rezoning of 7th, 14th, and 26th Street to R2. I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think that's appropriate for a whole bunch of reasons because I don't think the parallels to 17th and 20th are the same. I, we're, we're not talking about the same kinds of streets or the same kinds of, um, jobs and retail and commercial, uh, communities being connected with one another. Last I checked, there wasn't much besides big houses and big trees on San Vicente. Um, and maybe a school. Um, and, uh, and if, and some beautiful courtyard apartments. Um, I do, however, believe that we should find a way, and I, I like the wording in the second paragraph, um, to equalize the three units that are permitted in R1 zones. Right now, we have the big house, the ADU and the JDU. I think that's a distortion. I would like us to get to a place where we could have three relatively similar-sized units, but one of them might have to be the ADU if the law stays the way it is. So I think we need to find a way over the next year or so to develop that ordinance. And we started talking about it earlier tonight. It's clear that we're not going to get there by June 15th for council. But I think the work needs to start now. We don't know what's going to happen with SB9. We don't know what's going to happen with, um, AB 1401. So I think we need to start the work now. The other thing that I feel fairly strongly about is that the parking lots north of Montana, which may technically be currently zoned R1, need to be rezoned in order to facilitate the production of multifamily housing there. I think we need to look at the parking lot, other park, there may be other parking lots along Ocean Park or on the south side of Pico that are in a similar situation on the north side of Wiltshire. Uh, we need to look at all of those parking lots. And I also would be open, uh, and I think, again, I don't want to jump into this because we haven't had the conversation, but I, I, I think we should be open to the parcel immediately north of that parcel. I will say, I live on a block where you have commercial stepping down to multifamily, stepping down to R1. I don't think that is terrible. And so, stepping down to single family, excuse me. And so I don't, I think we ought to look with greater precision at the, um, we ought to look with greater precision at those parcels that are immediately on the other side of those parking lots. Some of them are separated by an alley, some of them are not. Um, and so, um, that's, that's where I am. But I, I don't support paragraph one. Um, and I believe that the goal of paragraph two should be worded in such as a way that we are going to explore this over the next year um, with, uh, you know, attention to whether we're dealing with a world in which SB9 is law or a world in which SB9 is not the law. Um, but we should aim, the purpose of the program should be to allow the three units that currently are permitted in disparate sizes to be provided in similar sizes. And that's as far as, that's as far as I'd be willing to go right now. I also, uh, want to bring up, because it was public comment that I found interesting. I believe it was Paras Maniar who spoke to us and spoke frankly, against his own economic interest. But he talked about the disparate effect that the, that the staff report proposal would have. And I think what, to go back to what Commissioner Fresco said, we are dealing with moral, we're dealing with a great problem of historic moral failure. And so I think it's tempting to say, let's do the right thing because it's the right thing. But I don't want to do the right thing and in doing so, create wrong things. And, um, and so I want to be very careful about that. And that's why I'm landing where I'm landing, which is to focus on the parking lots, uh, focus on the R1 parking lots that could be used for multifamily and focus on the creation of the three equitably sized units. But that doesn't, isn't going to happen overnight. So, what do we want to do?
I have a question, Sean.
Yeah.
Sean?
Yeah.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Why, why have you, why have you left out the parking lots on the south side of Montana?
Because they are mostly backing up into, I'm not sure that they're zoned R1. I think they're zoned R2. Do we know? Covering up the zoning map?
I think, I think they're zoning things we have to address if we want to use. But the pavilion lot being the major one.
That's correct.
Okay.
Rachel can confirm, but I believe the ones on the south side, they are zoned R2. But actually, there are no parking lots zoned. They're all zoned R2, yeah. There's not a parking lot on R1. There, there are no R1 zone parking lots.
What are the, what's the zoning on the, what's the zoning on the parking lots, like above the Whole Foods, above the Pete's?
Both of our town.
Oh, okay.
That's interesting. So what's the barrier, wait? What is the barrier to? I'm bringing it, I'm bringing up the zoning map right now. According to my map, it's zoned R1. It's labeled R1A. It's an A lot. It's labeled, it's zoned for a single-unit residential with an off-street parking overlay. I'm looking at it right now. Between 14th and 15th. You've got one there. You've got another one between 9th and 10th.
Yeah, I think.
What could we do? I mean, the others, the other pieces are zoned neighborhood commercial, which has its own challenges when it comes to multifamily.
Well, except you get 1763 density bonuses.
Right. So that's a good thing. Could we talk about those particular parking lots?
Yeah, sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you were talking about the south side. So the north side, those, those are largely R1, like A lots. We duplicate sizes for those because we were trying to identify sites on Montana. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rachel, but I think most of them were not needing that minimum size, like in terms of the size of the parking lot. There's 7,500 or, or like, we were trying to look at corner properties. There were 10,000. And when you're trying to, you know, solve for like, subterranean parking, it's, you know, maybe possible. Like, they're, they're just not very big lots on Montana on average. So there, we did identify a couple, but it's not as much as it might, you know, that you might prefer or want to see.
Yeah, I, I, we've already covered, we use the use of parking lots adjacent to commercial. That's already baked into our cake right now. I don't think we need to pick apart each pavilion lot or that. Let's move on. I think we've written a conclusion. As far as we can productively at this scale of neutrality, let's keep moving. We got, we're still about three pages to go here, four pages. We got.
I know. Can I, can I add if there's, well, I think we're all on the same page about eliminating Paragraph 1. How do people feel about finding a pathway to create equitably sized units?
I think that we can't drop this. I think it's just so important. You know, there's so many things I heard even in some of the letters. I mean, we've received so many letters, and I read every single one of them. And, you know, talking about, well, we can't have renters nearby because they litter. And, you know, these are all legacies where, you know, we were, these rules were literally invented to segregate, but under the name of protection. And so, over generations, the racism wasn't discussed, but the safety that they provided to your property values and to your well-being is what was remembered. And people still really believe that. And so, when we pursue this, if we're not going to do it now and we're going to pursue it, we need to talk about all of the things that go with it as part of that analysis. The idea that people think a six-foot hedge in their front yard makes them safer and doesn't give safe harbor to bad guys who want to be able to whittle away at their locks. You know, all that kind of stuff, it has to be part of it. It's, it really is a symbolic move. And I can abide by waiting and trying to make sure we do it right and do more good than harm. But I just want it to be a full look.
Can I say something? I'm really, I mean, I think first you have to understand the people who send things into us is sort of an isolated group. I mean, they're not necessarily representative. And I, I take real, clearly what you got was horrendous. But I take real strong exception that somehow those people represent people living in R1. And that really is objectionable to me. And, and I don't think there's any reason for us to proceed with a housing program that isn't going to work.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's why this education, this, this, this conversation has to continue. I mean, I, we got a letter from someone who objected to new housing in R1 because the letter writer wasn't sure where the person's trash cans were going to go on trash day because there might be too many cars on the block. I, I'm sorry, but I was ashamed for our city when I read that letter. I can't put it any other way. To suggest that trash cans are more important than homes for human beings is, is beyond, it's just beyond comprehension. But be that as it may, Leslie's right. That person does not speak for our community. That person does not speak for that person's street or their neighborhood or anything else. And I truly believe that we, we're in the middle of a massive national conversation about what it means to be people who are doing their best, to learn from our history, to learn from the institutions that have done racist things and may even have been designed for racist outcomes, but to live our lives as people who truly are trying not to be racist and doing our best not to, to be, to treat other people fairly and inclusively and equitably. We're living in that contradiction, and it's not going to be easy for anyone. But we have to do something. But we, I don't think this is what we have to do, given the pending legislation in Sacramento, given the fact that, as far as I know, R1 is not going away in Brentwood anytime soon, or, you know, in West LA anytime soon, aside from the few places next to the Expo line. And so, we may be creating more equities, inequities than we solve by trying to resolve Santa Monica's history in a piecemeal kind of way. So, do, I just want to ask that, let's, I think we should take a straw poll. This is something that really motivated our community to write in on a variety of levels. I think this is, you know, a tough one. I'd like to go by each of the two paragraphs so we have absolute clarity. Can we agree to eliminate the first paragraph? And just by a show of hands, are we all agreed on eliminating the first paragraph? Okay, and opposed to eliminating the first paragraph? Okay, now let's look at the second paragraph. And my proposal is that we, you know, make this clear that we're looking to make these three units, find a process to make these three units equal.
So if I might add, I do think we have to recognize state ADU law if we are going to, you know, if you create equitably sized units that are all dwelling units, the ADU law would still apply. But I just want to make that clear. I mean, you know, but the limitations on, right, but the limitations on size, those are state law limitations that are, that are, you know, if an ADU gets, there are size limitations on ADUs because otherwise they become dwelling units. So I just want to make clear that the size limitations are set by state law. So if you increase it larger than that, then it becomes a dwelling unit. So I just want to make sure that when we are looking at this, that that is kept in mind.
Absolutely. So thank you, Heidi. I think Nina was getting at this, and I had the same thought, which is, what if the, and this is why I want to be vague in this, right? So if the goal is to get to three units on a 6,000-square-foot lot, you could end up with probably four. But, you know, you could imagine two 1,500-square-foot units that then you add a 12, if we create a pathway to a 1,200-square-foot ADU and then a JDU somewhere in there, you have, they're, they're closer together than what we have now, which is a 3,000-square-foot home, a 1,000-square-foot ADU, and a 500-square-foot JDU.
Sean, we went to the R1 development standards a year ago, and the R1 people are not going to go for that. They, they reduce their development standards to have smaller houses. And if you reduce them further, I think that's going to be a real problem.
Heidi?
I think, I think if you, if there are two, if there are two dwelling units on one parcel, the purposes of the state ADU laws, that would be a multiple, that would be multiple units on one parcel. You would not be eligible for a JDU because that's only a single-unit dwelling. But if it's a multiple, if it's a multifamily parcel for purposes of ADU law, then eventually, once they're existing, there would be an opportunity for two additional detached ADUs. The way that the law is currently written.
Well, I'm suggesting that we start a process of trying to figure this out. I'm not suggesting.
Totally understand. Right. No, I understand. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make that clear for your motion.
Okay. So what I'm moving is that we revise Paragraph 2 to start a process to arrive at similar-sized units.
How about, why don't you get vaguer? Why don't you just say a, a public conversation about a social justice approach to zoning R1? Or something, you know?
I have no idea what you're saying.
Leslie, hang on, hang on, hang on. Leslie, wait. Mario?
Well, I, I was just saying, we're, we're going down a slippery slope. There's nothing productive here. We know that if you made it same size or smaller or bigger, you're still not going to create a feeling of equity and historical, let's say, reversal, if you will. You won't even have a feeling of equity and social justice. What you're doing is, again, maximizing opportunities for speculative development. It'll happen slowly, but it will change the nature of the neighborhood. But I think we should steer away from this. This is something that has to be handled socially. Can't be handled through planning. Planning's not the appropriate tool to turn that particular nut.
I'm going to disagree on that. And I, and I don't, and I don't, and I don't agree. I don't, I, I really want to distinguish between equity and access and affordability. I'm not trying to solve an affordability problem. I want to be really clear about that. I'm, I, you know, if I, it's also, if we're, if we're looking for the perspective of HCD, and one of the reasons that I oppose the R2 upzoning is we have so many single-family properties sitting on R2. Just because we label something R2 doesn't mean that it's going to get turned into multifamily dwellings.
Then why do it?
Which is why I voted against doing it. I'm talking about something else. I'm talking about a pathway to multiple unit, providing a pathway to multiple units on, on current single-family zone sites, but I'm not ready to do it for this, you know, for, for, for June 15th. That's just, we're not there yet. But I don't think we can leave this untouched. I think history demands that we start this conversation.
I, I agree with you, but how do we, how do we objectify this? How do we turn this into a policy that helps us tonight?
The city shall, the city shall explore options, the city shall explore options through commu, consistent with current law, current state law or something, that may permit up to three units to be constructed, three similarly sized units to be constructed in R1 zone parcels.
Now, if we're going to do it, I think, I mean, although I'm not sure if Nina was being facetious or not when she said, why don't we make it more big? I think if we're going to do it, it has to be more big, right? If the intent, if the intent of what I think is the majority of the commission is that we don't feel comfortable saying we're going to upzone this and that, that, but we want to make some kind of statement. I feel like what we have consensus on is that the city shall explore options to redress historic racism and segregation in R1 zoning.
Yeah. Through future land use decisions. I was going to add on. Through, yeah, through, through future land use decisions. Yes.
And that's the policy, and we move on.
I would just change R1 zoning to single-family zoning.
Yeah, that's a good change.
Yeah.
So should we do a straw poll?
Yeah, but read the sentence again?
Well, I, I just made it up, so I can't.
The city shall explore options for reusing historic, historically racially exclusionary.
Yeah, I mean, the staff can go back and listen to the, or maybe they can.
Heidi or George, do you have something that?
I think Alice wanted to say something too.
Yeah, Alice?
I, I don't know. This is so vague. I don't know if this is.
Yeah, I hear you.
I can, I can take a stab about what I heard, I think.
Okay.
So it was that the city shall explore options to address historically exclusionary single-unit dwelling zones through future land use decisions.
Sounds right.
I got kicking the can.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
Kind of sucks, but it's better than just saying, no, we're not going to do it.
That's right.
We have to start discussing the history.
Otherwise, we're.
Didn't feel it. And we all think it is.
Can we take a poll and then move on?
Yeah, let's do it.
Please.
Everybody okay with this? Raise your hand. All right, terrific. Okay, 5A. Any comments?
Nope.
All right, 5B, any comments? Oh, Alice, somebody? No, Mara's giving me a thumbs up, 5B. Okay, 6A, you know what? Here, let's do this. Anybody have any comments on 6A through 6? They are important. I'm just recognizing that there may not be specific comments.
They all begin with the word maintain, so, you know. They're trying to.
Okay, let's, and we have, I just want to note that we have, we have highlighted POD on multiple occasions as an important tool for keeping people in their homes that is substantially less expensive than building them new homes. Okay, 6E through 6H. Elisa?
Sorry, on 6D, I would like, I'm a little worried about the subject to additional staffing resources. I would like, this could be a priority. And I asked Jean whether it was covered in the new budget. And she said, we have some grant money to work on this initially, but it needs to have more focus. Her biannual budget, there is not a position.
How about this, rap, drop the, drop the first four words or five words and simply say, the city shall prioritize additional education and outreach?
Yeah, that's great.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Great, okay. 6E through H, anything?
Oh.
Okay, 7A through D. Okay, we are done with the programs, folks. Ellis?
Yeah, I, I want to get into the weeds now, but I, I hope that at some point, as part of 70, we can, we can figure out a way to have some sort of citywide emergency rental assistance program where people can come to an office, get the money that they need to pay their rent, walk away, and, you know, let's just table that for later.
Well, no, you want to, you want to put, you want to create a new priority? A new program? You want to recommend an emergency rental assistance program?
You know, I, I would maybe add a sentence that says there. You know, I, I would maybe add a sentence that says there, um.
Oh, yeah.
You mean that the AHPP will only be counted against the base project? Is kind of what you're getting at, that the total units for purposes of state density bonus is the base project?
Yeah. Is that clear where it needs to be clear? Leslie?
I, I just have one comment that kind of relates to.
Hey, before you go, I want to make sure that that was clear where it needed to be clear. I, I thought you were on this.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at that piece. We'll get right back to you on that piece.
Okay, well, Leslie. Okay.
Okay, I, I just, I just want to say, um, something about the R1 discussions we had tonight. And that is, um, to the R1 people. The fact that we have to build 8,900 housing units in the next eight years does not go away because we didn't do anything with R1. So I expect you and hope that you will, um, work with us and support us in finding locations and doing a meaningful housing element that results in the, the development that we need to do. Otherwise, we will face serious, serious state sanctions if we don't. So I just want to call out to my fellow R1 residents that that's what I think.
Okay, um, do we have any discussion on the SSI?
Chair, can I just show?
Yeah.
Can I just show the revised language for 4B? Because I, I think we didn't get a chance to, um, that, that was the one where it seemed like there was some confusion about what it might apply to. It was, and if, I, I can just show briefly the red line just so it's clear.
Yes.
So it'll read that the city shall amend the zoning ordinance, loose downtown community plan, the Bergamon area plan to establish feasible development standard that can support the city's minimum inclusionary requirements and to create equitable housing opportunities for housing production throughout the city. And then to promote the fair and equitable distribution of new housing opportunities across the city, feasible development standards will be amended to incentivize housing production errors that have historically not permitted or accommodated housing. So that's, that's the change.
So I have a question for staff, um, and I want to follow on something that Leslie raised. And I want to be very upfront about this. Because there is conversation, for example, on social media about the fourth and fifth in Arizona site, which is a city owned site, which I think staff has calculated for its, for maximizing affordable housing on that site. Um, and so conversations about lots and lots and lots and open space are going to be difficult ones to have. I'd like to know from staff to the extent that it's possible, having taken R2 off the table uh, on those three thoroughfares and having taken the upzoning of R1 off the table, how many housing units have we removed from what we are sending up to HCD? And where do, where might we find them?
So, um, I think to be clear, as we discussed before, the programs for the upzoning of R1 or the densifying of R1 um, were not about RENA compliance. It was our best read of AFFH and to, you know, what are actions we can take to overcome, um, you know, historical exclusionary zoning practices, right? That, that's the directive under AFFH. Um, it would be purely speculative for us to have chosen random parcels, you know, the R1 where it's, it's never had multi-unit housing. So that, it, it, it really doesn't move, that does not affect the SSI whatsoever. Um, you know, because it just wasn't accounted for in there. It was more a programmatic action to open up access, you know, potential access for, um, more diverse housing types, um, in those neighborhoods.
And therefore, on the basis of, on the base, I want to finish the, the question. On the basis of the changes that we've made tonight to the staff recommendations, if we voted to forward the housing element with our amendments, are we forwarding a compliant housing element to the council?
Yes, I mean, it's, again, the RENA, it, it does, it doesn't, it did not affect the SSI um, or the RENA compliance, um, piece. And, um, you know, we will definitely have to assess, um, you know, where we stand with AFFH, um, you know, with respect to, to, to where we are. But, you know, there's, as we said, there's different ways to get there. So, you know, it, it appears that the recommendation would be compliant still.
Okay, I, I think it's important to restate what Leslie said earlier, which is that when we look at our city, we're looking at multiple neighborhoods. And when we think, for example, about Noma and Wilmont, all those kids are going to school together. All those kids are growing up together. And, um, I, I, I don't want to downplay the historic racism that has been present in our community. But I also don't want to, you know, um, overplay the extent to which we are at, like, I, we're a third of a LA city council district, right? I mean, we're, we're really, um, if we look at our neighborhoods, if we look at, say, our school communities, they are far more integrated than many parts of Los Angeles County. And so I, I, I'm saying this because I want to create a record for it. We have a lot of work to do, but I also think that Santa Monica deserves a great deal of credit for the work that it's done, for its commitment to rent control, for its commitment to housing preservation. And I would defy anyone in Sacramento to try to claim that we are not making progress in furthering fair housing. I think, you know, there are going to be a lot of people out there who are going to say, well, we took the cowardly way out by not, you know, by not immediately upzoning R1. I think that would have been performatively woke and, um, not actually result in the changes that we need in our community. And that's why I voted against it, and I think that's why a lot of us voted against it with every respect for everything that Nina said. So I just want to put that on the record because I think we are doing well. I think we are making progress and I think we have a lot of work ahead of us. But I don't think we're as badly off as many people might suggest. Sorry, Leslie, I just needed to get that right.
I'm, I'm really glad you said that. Um, you said it much better, much better than I would have. Um, I just wanted to clarify with Jane, that we couldn't, we cannot judge how many units we produce by upzoning R1. That would be impossible, so we're not going to the housing element. But it would go into the performance report in the state, assuming that happened. So we will be losing some performance units because we did not act on R1. And that's why I said I would expect the R1 people to support our putting the density elsewhere in the city.
So if I, if I may just add one quick, um, addendum to what the planning manager spoke about with respect to a compliant housing element. We don't, as the planning manager explained last night, we don't have any experience with what HCD has interpreted to be a compliant AFFH, um, housing element. So I just wanted to caution everyone that, you know, you send this up to HCD based on the fact that we do not have any experience with this. We are, we are, can't guarantee what HCD will say. I just wanted to slide that.
Okay.
Okay, let's keep moving. Can, I, can we keep moving? And I think Alice had something about the SSI.
That's where I wanted to go. Alice?
Yeah, I just want to state for the record that, um, I, I, uh, have some concerns about the methodology that was used to calculate, um, uh, the development potential, both under existing loose and under potential modifications. It's premised on the idea that, uh, each unit will require about 1,050 square feet, uh, inclusive of common areas and other, other space. You know, the, the trends that we've seen is the development of smaller units. Uh, I think that 1,000 square feet is, is, um, uh, it's, it's too much, honestly. And, and it doesn't, I don't think, give us a really accurate representation of what can be built out under loose or, or what could potentially be built out under, uh, anticipated zoning changes. Uh, I, I just wanted to raise that concern for the record. And, um, you know, I know it's too late to hit it now, but, um, you know, it is what it is.
Okay. Any other closing thoughts before we move a recommendation?
Like, I have one closing thought.
Yeah.
Which is that I hope people who are descendants of displaced families in Santa Monica, you know, agree with what happened today. Because I'm just really uncomfortable with it. That's all.
Any other?
I'd like to move our recommendation.
For a second? Okay, so moved by Commissioner Pastor, seconded by Commissioner Reese. Uh, the motion is the housing element with the changes. Yep, uh, Alice?
Uh, I mean, this is with the understanding, uh, of the straw polls that were taken, uh, along the way, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I will stop all my notes.
Uh, and with, uh, to Alice, you wanted to make it clear for the record that you took no part in the consideration of 4A, I believe? Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Yep, so I want to make sure that that's noted as well. All right, um, any other comments on this housing element?
I just want to, I just want to sincerely, sincerely thank staff for their incredible work on this. I mean, it is a really fine housing element for all the time we've spent going through it. Um, you've done an amazing job and I, and kudos to you.
Yes, so let me, let me, before we vote, let me also sort of say, I think Nina is noting in her comments, and I think she's right. I think we have to look everyone, be able to look everyone in the eye and say that we did our best work, that we balanced, um, some very hard choices. Uh, we are in a world of housing crises, affordability crises, access crises, racial crises, equity crises. And, um, there are no good choices to be made. We are balancing competing goods and competing bads. One of the things that I want to say to this group, represent, you know, from all of our perspectives, I think over the last year, um, we've brought, I want to say thank you to my colleagues because I think we have brought, um, our best thinking, our best selves, um, our best dilemmas to this process. We have disagreed where we have needed to disagree. We have agreed where we've needed to agree. Uh, and we've done this in the public eye as appropriate, you know, as we've needed to, because this is a public process. Um, we've done it through countless meetings and there are many, many more ahead of us. So I want to thank each of you, um, for your work. Uh, we've all put in many, many hours on this. Staff has been available to us in so many different ways. Um, in a terrible year, in a pandemic year, in a COVID year that has exposed more inequity than we ever thought might even be possible. Um, and in a year when our staff have been called upon to save our city and plan for the future at the same time with two thirds of the resources or less than they had just a few months ago. Um, to be where we are, I think, is extraordinary. Um, it's testimony to the strength of our city, to the strength of our community, to the strength of our civic volunteers and to the extraordinary professionals that we have working with us and for us and on our behalf. So with my appreciation, um, and that I'm sure is echoed by everyone, could we have a roll call?
Thank you. If I may, if I may, since Commissioner Raskin will not, did not participate on 4A, we should probably take that piece out of the general vote and then vote on 4A separately without Commissioner Raskin.
Sounds good. Is that a friendly amendment to the maker and the seconder? Right. So first, we're voting on everything except 4A.
Right. Okay, Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fatah Benardi?
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes, yeah.
Commissioner, Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Landris.
Yes. And now may we assume that Commissioners, uh, Pastor and Reese have made the same motion with respect to 4A?
Yeah. Make the motion with respect to 4A.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fatah Benardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Raskin, Ben Epstein, uh, Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Landris.
Yes.
So I also, I want to thank you on behalf of the commission for cheering us through this. Incredible, I don't know how many hours we've been after this, but you've done a fantastic job and thank you. And, and we're not an easy group.
Well, you've held me accountable. No, you've held, listen, we've all held each other accountable. Um, I want to thank Vice Chair Pastor for her work tonight, um, keeping us moving forward quickly. But, uh, thank you for holding me accountable, all of you, um, and Alisa especially. But I appreciate that. I, I know that we've gone into the weeds sometimes, but I think I'm a go slow to go fast person, and I think that we did better work for having taken the time to resolve uh, some of these challenges. Um, and for the public to be able to see us having these conversations openly in Canada.
Remember the public, they were the day that we looked really, really weird on Zoom.
Yeah, Jim?
Oh, I would just, my experience tells me this was the easy part, you guys. Implementation is going to get much sticky. So let's enjoy this while we can, and I appreciate working with you and staff on this.
This is only the draft, you guys.
Right. We got to implement it.
Right, and, you know, in case members of the public are wondering, what are you going to do without the planning commission? I want to remind you all, we are meeting again on June 9th. We're meeting again on June 16th. Um, there is, uh, there's plenty ahead. And, uh, this, as, if you're still watching, um, this item will be going to the city council on June 15th. Uh, and there will be opportunities for public comment then. If you want to make a, uh, give public comment as well, the housing commission will be hearing this on June 10th. And, um, you can go to the housing commission site to find the details there. Uh, with that, barring anything else, perhaps we ought to adjourn.
Really?
Great, good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff.
Thanks, all.